Okay. All right. Welcome. Welcome. I don't have, oh, here's my gavel. But I'm afraid to bang it. It's like...
It's over here.
All right. This is the best part. Okay. I'm calling to order the May 7th meeting of the State Board of Education. We're going to start with a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to call this meeting to order and we're going to immediately start by swearing in two new board members. So I'm going to ask Kim and Matt to meet me in the middle of the dais here so that we can get you sworn in. I think we do these one by one because, you know, maybe one of you would disagree or something. Hold that and put your hand on it. Can you hold it in? Do that at the same time. Excellent. Oh, now you have to raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I, Kim Bronson, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you. This is the beginning of the big battle that is going to get you sworn in first. So you're going to hold it in your left hand. Raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. I, Matthew Navo, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you. Cheers. Cheers. Okay. And Kim, you want to get one with your husband also if you want to come?
Yes.
You got it. Okay. So I want to get one. There are some differences between all of them. Yeah. If I'm referring to him when he was swearing in, he now has 6.2 million shelter. Okay. So we are delighted to have Kim Patillo Bronson and Matthew Navo joining the State Board of Education today. Here's a brief summary of their backgrounds. Matt Navo served as the former superintendent of the Sanger Unified School District from 2013 to 2018, and before that, he served in a variety of K-12 roles as a special education teacher, a secondary instructor, counselor, resource teacher, junior high learning, high school assistant principal, elementary principal, alternative education principal, director of special education, and area administrator. And we are thrilled to have all of that expertise at the table in Matt. Thank you. We check a lot of boxes with you, Matt. And Kim Patillo Bronson is the vice president for Policy and Strategy, responsible for strengthening First Five LA's profile and influence on local and statewide early childhood public policy, legislative and advocacy efforts, in addition to oversight of First Five LA's relationships with local, state, and federal policymakers. She also ensures First Five LA's external strategic partnerships, public policy and government affairs, communications and marketing efforts are integrated to drive better outcomes for the highest number of children and families in LA. Before being with First Five, Kim was with the ACLU and in a variety of other roles advocating for equity in education, and we are thrilled to have that expertise at the table as well. Thank you, Kim. Do either of you have any comments you'd like to share?
I...
You have to push your button.
I just wanted to say thank you for the privilege of being able to serve on this board. As a homegrown product of California, I benefited immensely from public schools and consider it a great honor to actually be able to give back in this capacity. I think it's also just an incredible moment where the nation really is looking to California to get a number of advancements right, both on the early side and the prevention, which is where much of my more recent work has been, but more generally on equity and making sure that all of kids in California actually benefit and thrive. Thanks.
No, just want to thank you, the board, and the governor and staff for making the transitions thus far. So accommodating to be part of this, and it's an honor to be part of this, and I think the state of California is poised in a great position to do some great things for the kids of this great state, and I'm happy to be part of it. So thank you.
Without much ado, we're going to jump right into our study session. I want to give a few housekeeping announcements. Letters from the public on matters before the board were aggregated and are filed in an electronic folder, sent to you by board staff last week. We appreciate the public's continued cooperation in emailing all meeting-related correspondence to the SBE office at sbe@california, cde.ca.gov. By noon on the Friday immediately preceding the board meeting, the SBE meeting can be accessed fully via electronic agenda. There is one full print copy located in the lobby. Speakers should sign in at the table just outside the room. Binders are on the table with separate pages for each item number. Signing in on the page that identifies the item number on which they would like to speak will help ensure that we keep track of all the speakers for a particular item. Item 02 is the general public comment item during which members of the public may provide comment on items that are not specifically listed on the board's agenda. Public comment will be limited to one minute per speaker. In order to ensure that everyone gets their one minute, there's a timer at the podium that will flash a red signal to each speaker when the one-minute time limit has been reached. If anyone wishes to submit materials at the meeting, they should provide at least 25 copies to Amy Bubico with the item number that it pertains to clearly indicated. Please do not give information directly to board members. Speakers should introduce themselves and the organization they represent prior to speaking if applicable. Brevity is greatly appreciated, so please do not repeat comments that have already been made. Stating that you agree with the previous speaker or the comments made by so-and-so will be understood and noted. Additional seating with TV monitors is also available in Room 1103 around the corner and down the hall on the left, and in Room 1801 around the corner and to the right inside the Personnel Services office. Board members, please remember to turn your microphones on when speaking and off when you're not speaking. It's also important that board members speak into the microphone so their comments can be properly recorded as part of the proceedings. If you need to recuse yourself from any item, you must do so before any discussion on that item begins. And so, here we go. We are going to talk about the implementation of the... Sorry? We're now going to take up for item one, the study session on the college and career indicator. The goal of today's study session is to bring clarity to the policy purpose of the college and career indicator. We want to clarify the purpose that will help guide our future work as we build out the indicator and incorporate additional data elements. This is a really important metric for California high schools. Many of our districts and high schools are using the information from the indicator to guide decision-making at the local level. This indicator is already guiding the field, so clarity about its intended policy purposes is important as we move forward. The session was requested by the board at the September 2018 meeting, following some confusion, you know, regarding what the purposes are of the indicator. We have several issues about whether we're evaluating offerings versus where kids end up at the end of their high school career, how we can appropriately add new measures to the indicator and validate them, how do we think about college and career or career, et cetera. So we're going to... Are we going to go to presentation first or the...
Yeah.
So we're going to get first a presentation from our staff at CDE and then go to public And Cindy Kazanas and Jenny Singh, I think, are going to be our able presenters.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board, President Darlene Hammond and Chief Deputy Lupita Cortez Akala, and welcome to our new members of the board. It's really nice to have a full spectrum of individuals representing our students in our public school system. Today, I wanted to start off in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week of recognizing my kindergarten teacher, Margarita Hawk, who's originally from Mexico City and taught my English learner, who entered kindergarten only speaking Greek, English. So we are in May, and we can have a full discussion about what songs to pick in the morning on the way to school. So it's been, it's been a delight to enter the school system and see the growth and development of a five-year-old. So with, with that, I wanted to talk a little bit about, and I know that President Darlene Hammond walked through sort of the goals of today, but I think this, this discussion, this topic in particular is a really exciting one for, for us in accountability. Behind me today are my colleagues from not only our assessment division, but our college career transition division. There are representatives from Educational Testing Services, and there are, one of our major researchers are here to also talk through some of the things they've been working on, as well as a school district who's going to present. You have the right people in the room to have this discussion, and because this is not an action item, this is for informational purposes only, we're really hoping that you have an opportunity to have that robust discussion today. I started my morning off addressing the legislature about the longitudinal data system that the governor has proposed. He calls that cradle to career. And I have to tell you that the college career indicator would not exist if we did not have a longitudinal data system for our K-12. So we are hitting our 10-year anniversary for our student, student-level collection system, CalPads, and it has become richer every year because of the things that we add, but also the things that we use in accountability. People pay attention when you add data elements and then you hold them accountable for things. So as we walk through the presentation, I'll talk about where we've started adding new elements, where, you know, this, this new proposed work group and system that the governor has put in his, in his budget will, will lead us to conversations we have yet to have. So I think that there's going to be future opportunities as a result of that ongoing discussion. So today, we're going to do a brief walkthrough for those of you that have listened to this, this indicator and this discussion multiple times and hours, hours on end. Please be patient while we bring our, your colleagues up to speed so we're all on the same page. We do have a presentation from UC Davis, so McCall Kurlander is here and her colleagues. Madera Unified made the trip. Last year, you may remember, we had San Juan Unified, same meeting in May, talking about their use of the college career indicator. We'll walk through our plans for collections in the next couple of years and how we're going to, planning to build this out, and then we'll open it up for, for discussion. So we do have a long slide deck. I'm going to apologize in advance, but we've got, like I said, we've got the right people in the room to have this conversation, and we're hoping that will, again, that will result on the goal that President Darlene Hammond laid out today. So how does the college career indicator fit into our accountability system? This was one that was actually, prior to the inception of LCFF, the governor signed into law 1458, which, back in 2020, which actually called us to start, start thinking of a multiple measure system. So this is an indicator the department started working on prior to, to the development of what we know now as the California School Dashboard. And so that original bill set forth, looking beyond standardized test scores and thinking about multiple measures to demonstrate student achievement beyond, again, our grade 11 test. So over the course of the last several years, since the adoption of the accountability system in 2016, there are two priorities, two priority areas that focus on this topic. The first is Priority Seven, which is access to broad courses of study, and the second is Priority Eight, outcomes in broad courses of study. So access to broad courses of study originally started as a measure of the college career indicator, and we recognized over the course of the last couple of years that it would probably be better used as a local indicator. So you, those of you that were on the board last year, approved bringing that in as a local indicator, and the adoption of that was in, in March of 2018. The first collection of that was in the 2018 dashboard. So we now are publicly reporting out, there's a, there's a downloadable data file on responses to local indicators available to the public, as well as in each individual dashboard at the LEA level, on how districts are addressing access to broad courses of study based on what you all approved. The outcomes now is what we incorporate into the college career indicator. That's how we see how students are doing in completing the broad course of study. And so we're going to talk through this much more today. So a little bit on the background. This is the 30,000-foot level. I'm not going to take you through the dashboard. We're not going to go to the site today. We're just going to talk in generality. The college career indicator is one of those multiple measures. So for high school, you know, we're looking at not only the college career indicator, we're looking at graduation rate, we're looking at the academic indicator, suspension rate. Chronic absenteeism does not apply to high school, so the English learner progress indicator. So those are the multiple measures that high schools will receive colors on, currently receive colors on, on the dashboard. We are basing it on students in the four-year cohort. So if you're in a traditional school, you know, you're expected to complete it with, complete school within the four-year cohort. If you're in a dashboard alternative school status, we're looking at your grade 12 enrollments. With that information, we have looked, we are, we are reliant on not only test scores, but course completion results to look at preparedness. So there are three levels of preparedness, and I know in our memo that we gave you several memos on the accountability system, but we always refer back to our one-pager, our colored one-pager on the college career indicator for placement. What is not prepared means that you didn't, you didn't meet the measures and you didn't graduate. What is approaching prepared, and then what is prepared? So this one-pager really lays out, I think, in clear terminology what those placements are. From the beginning and the development of this indicator, we have always wanted to have a well-prepared level, and not, I think it was when we got to the place where you all had to make a decision back in 2016 that you said, "Not quite ready for this well-prepared level because you don't have enough college measures in this indicator." And so we have said publicly, and we are stating this again today, I'm sure it will be probably a topic of discussion, that there, it has not been built out yet until we get that data collection in place and start being able to use that data to, to demonstrate that students are prepared for career. So the intended purpose, this has been something that we've had in, in prior board items, but I think on the slide, it, it really neatly talks about why we have a college career indicator. And our indicator, you know, there's, not every state is doing this the same. I have to say that. We have been acknowledged nationally for, for being very creative in how we do it, having a very solid indicator. But with that said, our purpose is to complete, to provide a more complete picture beyond the graduation rate of how LEAs are preparing students for success after high school. So we really want to know that students have all they need in their toolkit to be successful out of high school. I also supposed to emphasize, and I think member Burr's terminology has been sort of a seal, a seal of, good housekeeping seal is what you've used before, so that the diploma means more, and that it represents a broad course of study, rigorous and broad course of study, to prepare students for success after high school. And then also, there's a place in the college career indicator where we've tried to make sure that what, by having the indicator in place, that we're encouraging high schools to provide students with a rigorous, for schools to provide students with a rigorous broad course of study. So perhaps beyond their normal offerings, now they're thinking beyond that, perhaps it's, you know, additional IB courses, or like you're going to hear today, more dual credit courses with a local college. And then finally, that it represents good policy and reflects the priority of California educators and stakeholder groups. So just like anything that we start to think about in accountability, the first thing we do is we go to our policy working groups, we talk to the stakeholder groups, and we make sure that it is technically sound. So there is quite a bit of transparency there, and then when we're done with everything and you all vote on it, we make all those data files available to the public to allow them to replicate items if they wish to. So we are looking at not just a point in time, this is different than, you know, most of the other measures in that we're looking at cumulative achievement over the four years of a student's time at a school or multiple schools. So because we have, again, our student-level data system, we're able to track students who have moved from a high school to high school or high school to alternative school and back to a traditional high school, and we're able to look at their, their coursework and programs they may have been involved in, or tests that they may have passed or achieved a, a level that is, that meets the criteria. We also, of course, look at our grade 11 assessment. That is a cornerstone of, of the college career indicator. It's not the only thing, but that is one of the main ways that students are deemed prepared for, for the measure, is under the Smarter Balance grade 11 assessments. And those, of course, are, you know, it's a snapshot, it's a one-day time and point, point in time, actually multiple days because you're taking English Language Arts and you're taking mathematics. But really trying to, to see how students and what they've learned from grade 12 to the grade, grade nine through grade 12, so again, the accumulation of the four years. These are the current measures that are approved by, by you all, this body. Some of these are standalone measures, which means that, for example, the state seal of bili literacy, you simply need to meet the criteria for the state seal of bili literacy, and you've been deemed prepared. The other items, such as A through G course completion, and we're going to talk about this in just a little bit, are not a standalone item. You need to have something else that is there, and that is based on, on research that's been completed by Professor Kurlander. So just a sort of the life cycle of the college career indicator and how it was built out, we, and this can, this again goes the flow of the circle, so originally based on research, and we placed the measures using Smarter Balance assessments. We're going to talk a little bit more about that, that correlation. We made sure it was evaluated for technical soundness. There was industry and LEA engagement on this, continues to be on this, and then, of course, we collaborate with our stakeholders before bringing, bringing anything to this body. So you're going to hear a lot from me today, but I'm going to take a short break, and Jenny Singh is going to come up and do the next piece of this, talking through the research aspect of it, and then we're going to bring up our, the, our guest, guest presenters today. So here we go.
Again, my name is Jenny Singh, and I've been asked to go over the initial phase of development for the CCI. So I'm going to ask you to take a stroll with me down memory lane, because as we indicated, as Cindy indicated earlier, we started this work in 2014. So that was several, several years ago. But we did it with extensive input from educational stakeholders and researchers. So one of the things that we did is we held a statewide webinar, and we had six regional meetings, and the regional meetings were throughout the state, in the Bay Area, north, Northern California, Southern California, and of course, Central California. And we had quite a few attendees, around 500. And we also had 146 attendees that gave public comments. So we had a really good opportunity to have a dialogue with not only district and county staff, but we had parents and community members who attended these regional meetings. So it was, I thought, a really good use of our, of our time, and we got a lot of valuable input. So we took this input, and we then conducted a statewide survey to obtain feedback on the CCI methodology and measures. And back in 2014, we received 1,768 responses. And I know that doesn't seem like a lot, and you're talking about a state as big as California, but at that time, the number of responses that we got for this survey far exceeded any other survey the department put out. So we were really pleased with that, and we felt that, that meant that people were really interested in the development of the CCI. So of course, with anything that we do, we, we like to build it on some research. And because, you know, not a lot of, we're really going beyond what other states are doing, and there wasn't a lot out there at, at that time, in the beginning of 2014, we felt that it was really important to bring on some really well-respected and established educational scholars and to look at their research. And so, of course, David Conley, who is a professor of education policy and leadership, and was the former CEO of the Education Policy and Improvement Center, EPIC, was one person. We used his research, and we actually contracted with EPIC to help us with that, but we'll get to that in a little bit. And then McCall Kurlander from UC Davis, we used a lot of research that she had done. And then, of course, our president, Linda Darlene Hammond, was also a main component. I felt very honored that she felt that this was important enough that she and one of her staff members from the, from the Stanford Center of Opportunity Policy and Education, Scope, actually wrote a paper about career measures that we could include in the CCI. So we did contract with EPIC, and Dr. Conley was the project lead to conduct literature review of the, of the most valid and reliable measures for determining whether or not students were prepared for success after graduating high school. And he used 10 criteria to evaluate potential CCI measures, and those 10 criteria are listed in Attachment Two, Page Three. One of the things, though, that I liked about his criteria, that he also, he, among the 10 criteria, he had criteria that looked at the value to students. Was this measure valuable to students? And I thought that was really important. And he also really wanted to look at public understanding. So those are just two of the criteria. Of course, he looked at whether it was fair comparison, whether it was stable, whether it represented various pathways that students could take. So he had a large pool of measures that he looked at for all, for all of the measures. So there was, he actually presented, wrote six different literature reviews for the department, and then wrote the final paper that was presented to, to the board. And these are some of the findings. If you'd like to read the paper, you'll see there's a lot more findings, but there's some of them right here. And he, the findings were that a multi-tiered, multi-dimensional model leads to a more valid representation of college and career preparedness than relying on a single measure. So there was no one measure that was going to be the silver bullet for a CCI, and there was no one measure that ranked either rated strong or weak across all the 10 criteria. He did find that the course-taking behavior was one of the best predictors of college success, is relatively stable over time, is understood by educator and educators, and it had little impact on schools, meaning that there wasn't going to be a lot of, the schools weren't going to have to report additional data because it was already data that was reported through CalPads. And of course, it covers all students because all students are taking courses when they're in high school. He also looked at dual enrollment, and he thought that that was a measure that would warrant further attention as we were able to develop that out and collect that information through CalPads. And at that time, we were just developing the state seal of bili literacy, and he really thought that that would be an important measure for us to look at once we were able to collect that data through CalPads as well. So we have our CCI. It does have multiple measures in it, and of course, some of the measures, of course, were based on the, on the findings of Dr. Conley and the staff at EPIC. So the course-taking behavior, since that is a really good predictor of college success, we added in A through G and CTE courses. For well-established accountability, accountability measures that have a high degree of stability, we added in A- added in AEP and IB exam scores. And then to incorporate measures, a measure that would positively correlate with preparedness, persistence, and aspiration, we did the college credit courses. As you know, we started out calling it dual enrollment, but now it's called college credit courses because dual enrollment meant different things at different schools. So we wanted to be clear on that. So I think it's really important to know that we use the early assessment program as we were developing the measures. And one of the reasons is what we were one of the first states to really take on this work and we wanted to make sure that we made decisions that were based on data. We had to determine what was going to be the criteria for prepared and approaching prepared, and we wanted something to base that on. So EPIC did an analysis based on the Grade 11 ELA Early Assessment Program. And at that time, that was something that was taken at the end of the STAR testing. Students could opt in to answer those questions. Any student that took the ELA exam was able to answer those additional questions. And most students did participate. If I remember correctly, it was around 90%. So we use the EAP to provide students with an early indication or a predictor of their readiness to take college-level courses. So when they completed this and they put their name on it so they can get the results, they would know if they were ready to take college-level courses or if they had to take some additional courses in their senior year in ELA and math to qualify for those courses. And of course, now the EAP is based entirely on the Grade 11 S-Back results for ELA and math. So all students who take the ELA and mathematics assessments, S-Back assessments, will receive the results if they choose to. So because we were using the EAP, we really wanted to make sure that the EAP was the appropriate assessment to use. And so we had McCall Kurlander, who wrote a paper identifying indicators for college readiness and success, present to our advisory group. And she had done extensive research about the EAP and how it reduced remediation rates among first-time freshmen at the CSU system-wide in both ELA and math. So she felt that we, that it could serve as a reliable comparison measure in evaluating the validity of other CCI measures. And the EAP covers more students in the graduation cohort than any other CCI measure that we have. And then, of course, we had lots of research that we looked at with Linda Darling-Hammon, but like I said, she wrote a specific report based on recognizing college and career readiness in the California School Accountability System. And so Dr. Darling-Hammon and Sue Babe proposed three types of career readiness measures for inclusion in the CCI. Completion of a high-quality integrated course of study that supports career readiness, similar to the completion of A through G for college, such as the CTE pathways. Satisfactory performance in work-based learning experience like internships and apprenticeships. And Cindy will go over that. We are actually going to start collecting that data in CalPats this year, so we're really excited about that. But she wanted it based on specific standards, such as the California Partnership Academies or the National Academy Foundation. And then achievement on career readiness assessments. So we know that ACT Work Keys is out there, the NOCT Job Ready and Pathways Assessment is out there. So any of those nationally recognized assessments that are approved, and those that include an industry-approved certificates, credentials, license, and badges that were valued by post-secondary institutions and businesses. So some additional findings is that the Scope paper really recognized the value of student profiles in motivating students to create and pursue important goals for themselves. And they did single out the state seal of bili literacy as an example of an accomplishment that might warrant formal recognition on a diploma to be included in a graduation rate portfolio. And of course, we do have a state seal that if students meet that criteria, the school can actually ask the department for the seal that can be included on their diploma. So stakeholder feedback was very important. My staff and I, we can run simulations all day long. But we really wanted to make sure that we engage with people who had expertise in program areas to make sure that we were getting it right. So we took all of this, all of the information and all those simulations that we did, we took it to the California Practitioners Advisory Group, the State Board of Education's Advisory Commission on Special Education, county and district staff, CTE experts, and advocacy stakeholder groups. And of course, we always have our Technical Design Group, our TDG. And that group is composed of LEA and charter school representatives and national experts in K-12 testing and assessment, accountability system, systems and research and evaluations. And they actually, we take all the data that we've done and all the feedback that we get from all the groups and we present it to the TDG and they really weigh in on the technical soundness of the methodology of the CCI model at each stage of development. And I will say that our TDG was very helpful to us. And when at all possible, they do not like to weigh in on anything that is policy-related. So they really like to just weigh in on the technical soundness of the methodology. So in developing the initial placement criteria for the prepared level, the EAP results for ELA and math were compared to student performance on each CCI measure. And again, this is the first time that states were, we were the first state to really go down this road and we wanted just to make sure that what we were proposing really did represent a really strong curriculum at the school level, that students were really getting a rigorous course of study. And this was consistent with the research from Conley and Kurlander. And so the secondary phase of development. So in June of 2016, CDE conducted two statewide stakeholder webinars on appropriate placement of the CCI measures. And at that time, we only had six measures. And we actually presented some of the simulations that we had done and some of the data, and we actually did polling. So anyone who was in the webinar could actually respond to whether a certain criteria should be counted as prepared or approaching prepared or not prepared. And we had, I think, over 500 people attend the webinars. So we got quite a bit of feedback on that. So we took that information to the TDG and they provided recommendations for each of the CCI-proposed measures at that time. And then at the September 2016 SPE meeting, the CCI was adopted as a state indicator and the board did approve status performance categories. Now remember, at that time, we did not have two years of data based on Smarter Balance, so we only had status to look at and we did not have change to look at at that time. So as Cindy referenced earlier, the CCI, you know, is a little college-heavy, has multiple measures for college preparedness, and only really one measure for career, and we knew that. And we, working with the recommendations from the Scope Report and the request of the SPE to strengthen career measures in the CCI, we convened two workgroups to identify potential career measures to be incorporated into the CCI. And that, of course, one was the CCI Work Group and the other was the California Advisory Task Force on Alternative Schools. And we are going to begin collecting data on career-centered coursework and completion of work-based learning experience for potential inclusion in the CCI. We don't have any of that data yet, so I can't say what's going to be included in the CCI or how it will be included in the CCI because, as you know, we have a process that we would have to follow to vet the criteria for our stakeholder groups, for the TDG, for our advisory groups, and then, of course, the board. So our CCI Work Group was established in 2017 and we really did have a very diverse group of people on our CCI Work Group. They, we had people represented from post-secondary, so the community college and UC system. We had a representative from CTA. Of course, we had county and district staff. We had business representatives. We had two different business representatives and we had charter school representatives. So we really had a diverse set of representatives who could provide us with advice. Oh, and we also did have researchers from West Ed and from Scope. So with that group, we did go through the various ways that we could collect data to add more measures for career. And based on the work of the CCI Work Group and the work of our Alternative Schools Task Force, we are going to have two new CCI measures. We have two new CCI measures that were adopted by the board in September of 2018. That was the state seal of bili literacy and the leadership military science. We have seven new measures that were developed for collection in 2018, 19. So they're going to be collected when we do our collection at the end of the year. And they're going to be, those are the measures that will be used for potential inclusion in future dashboards. And just a little bit of information about our California Advisory Task Force on Alternative Schools. That was really a joint project with the John W. Gardner Center at Stanford University, which was supported by a grant from the Stewart Foundation. We had really broad and geographical diverse representatives and we divided into three subcommittees. And the subcommittee that worked with us on some of the CCI measures was the subcommittee that worked on the Modified Academic Indicators Subcommittee. So they also gave us recommendations for the modified method for the graduation rate that is used in the dashboard. And we had representatives from the juvenile courts, from special education, from independent study schools, from charter schools, and from district and county staff. So we had a really good group. They did a lot of work for us. We were really pleased to have this joint project with the Gardner Center. And they did assist in the development of the career measures that are going to be collected for the first time this year. I'll call Cindy back up.
Great. So we're going to switch presentations and McCall Kurlander is present along with Sherri Reed, who leads the California Education Lab at UC Davis. They also have a graduate student here, Alex Hurt. Okay? And McCall has been a friend, but also a colleague of ours for several years now. We were successful in a five-year grant for several million dollars from the institution, from IES, from the U.S. Department of Education, which is led by Jonathan Isler of our staff. So we actually have out of that grant a full-time staff person dedicated to preparing data that then we turn over to UC Davis through this amount of understanding to do research on our behalf. And so you'll see some of that research today, but just as an aside, McCall was here yesterday for two hours. She's going to be here today for three hours. She has been, really, we've been, we've been working on this relationship for a while. I'm hoping that she'll, she'll stay, she'll stay friendly with us. But all joking aside, but actually, it is quite a joke. She probably has the most data we have given out, personally identifiable information to any researcher, she, because of this grant, this very unique opportunity with this grant. And in doing that, she also has access to CSU data, community college data, and University of California data. So really, our own mini launching of the data system exists just across the river in Yolo County. But we are very pleased to have her today and I know that Member Rucker has mentioned her a couple of times, keeps reminding me that we should be talking to McCall. And I want to assure you, we talk to her every week because we do have a standing meeting, but it's my pleasure to introduce to you Professor Kurlander.
Good afternoon. Thank you. It's an honor to present to you today and I'm waiting for my cubicle. At some point, I'm going to get a cubicle. Jonathan promised me. Yes, it's true. So I just want to, again, we think it's a great honor and a real responsibility to have the kind of data that we have. And so in addition to answering a lot of academic questions that we put in ivory-tower-top journals, we also very much are in partnership with folks in this building to answer questions that are needed, and this is one of those times. And so this is joint work with our great students and with Sherri Reed, who heads our whole lab at UC Davis. So this is a very narrow, our part is going to be quite short here. It's a very narrow and very specific analysis that folks wanted us to do, which is to look at what happened when we added the two additional indicators. So what's the difference? This is really a narrow analysis of the impact of the changes in the measures included in the CCI. All right, so Jenny's already given a very thorough review of where we've been. And so in particular, you'll note in this graph that the two additions are the state seal of bili literacy and the leadership military science participation in the program. And so those are the two additional measures and we're going to look at what happened when those two additional measures were included. All right, so the first thing we want to do is think about the temporal changes so we don't confound those two additional changes with other changes that are happening as well. So this is just if you look at the proportion of students meeting the prepared level on CCI with just the six measures over time. And so what importantly you see is that there is a temporal, we're moving upwards. Even just on those six measures, you'll see slight increases in students meeting the prepared level. So importantly, what happens when you added those two, when we added the two measures, right? So this is when you add, the comparison, the yellow now adds the two additional measures, the state seal of bili literacy and the military leadership science. And so here's the difference that we see. We see that in 1617, we moved to 63.2 prepared, which represents roughly 3,590 students. And in 1718, we went up to 63%, which represents, again, a difference between the six and eight measures of 3,530 students. Importantly, I just want to show you, this is the proportion of students meeting under each measure. So this adds up to more than 100 because students can meet across multiple measures. And so you can see the percent of students who are meeting prepared under each of these eight measures here that you see. And you'll see that obviously the majority meet based on the Smarter Balance assessments in ELA and math and the A to G completion plus the additional criteria. So if you just, just to, again, highlight, if you look at the state seal of bili literacy of 6.1%, many of those students are also, they're obviously meeting in another, in another measure. So importantly, we wanted to look at the demographic composition of students meeting prepared shift as a result of the shift to eight measures. And here, I really just want to highlight your attention in particular to where we see the difference came. The difference is really in our Latinx students. And so we see that an increase to the eight pathways increased the number of Latinx students who met prepared levels on the CCI. We also see more socio-economically disadvantaged students now meeting prepared on the CCI. We want to look at it at the school level. Let me just see if this is animated right. So here, we're now going to look at the school level impact. This includes all, all schools, all the 2,800 public schools in our data system in 1718. And you can see that most schools have more than 35% of their students meeting prepared. On the Y-axis is, it's going to be synonymous with our dashboard that Jenny explained or that I'm now going to turn to it. But I just want to, in particular, note that where you see that, that difference between the medium and high, but that the majority of our schools are having 35% of our students meeting prepared levels. If we look at that Y-axis and correlated to the actual dashboard, here you want to keep in mind both the Y-axis is the same now, it's the level. And then what you're looking along the top is going to be the changes, right? And so here, we'll spend a few minutes on this graph because it's a little confusing. What you really want to see is the percent of schools in the dashboard categories that moved as a result from the six to eight measures. And so here, I'll just draw your attention that these are, these movements are going to be in the green and blue categories. So you'll see the yellow and red show no differences between the six and the eight and the blue and the green show that in fact, as a result of the eight measures, you had more, more schools hitting those categories. So what, which are these schools, right? So 80, it turns out 85 schools benefited from the addition of two measures. And so these are schools that range in these different types. They're not all alternative or charter schools. Actually, 65 of those 85 are traditional schools. And then you can just sort of see the other, some other characteristics of those schools, the total enrollment across those 85, minimum to maximum. The average enrollment is 314 in those schools that benefited. And then the row below is comparison to the schools that did not benefit or that did not change. What about in school characteristics in particular, again, consistent with what we saw at the individual level data? These schools are schools that are largely representing large proportions of Latinx students. And so you'll see that additional change at the school level came about from schools that are serving large percentages of Hispanic students. Same with other student groups. We also see a change, a positive difference for schools that are serving high percentages of socio-economically disadvantaged students and English learners, again, likely correlated with the Latinx population characteristics that we saw. So what are we going to do next? Actually, the next is, the most interesting part is, as a result of having the post-secondary data, we can actually... data, we can actually merge the individual CCI measures with college outcomes. So again, this is the, the research that Jenny's referring to on A to G is from years of looking at those sort of A to G classification and seeing that it was a necessary but not sufficient condition for determining college readiness. So now we're actually going to look at how the CCI measures influence other actual post-secondary outcome, just enrollment, first-year performance like GPA and persistence to determine if they're actually predictive. We've actually started doing this at the school level. So that is, again, you can think sort of, instead of API, may it rest in peace, we now are like looking at the CCI, right? So to see if the CCI, in fact, is a good predictor at the school level. I'll stop there.
All right. We're going to keep moving. Madera Unified School District, as I mentioned, agreed to, graciously agreed to, to present. One of your staff members is from the area, so knew, knew the school district well. But now that you have a member on the Board from Central Valley, it's, it's always nice to see a perspective from, from a district. And so Assistant Superintendent Sherri Sissel and Kristin McKenna are here. She was the Director of the College Career Readiness Office at Madera. And unlike the other presenters, well, unlike myself and Jenny and Professor Curlender, we will take, if it's okay with you, President Darlene Hammond will take questions afterwards because they do have to leave to attend a Seal of Bileiteracy ceremony tonight, coincidentally. So they have to get back on the road right after they're done with their presentation.
Good afternoon, President Darlene Hammond, members of the Board. I'm Cheryl Sissel, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services in Madera Unified. And we are very excited to have the opportunity today to present to you information from our school district around the College and Career Indicator. But most importantly, sort of what the work has looked like over the past four years in our district to try to address the needs of our students, to ensure the highest number of students will graduate from Madera Unified College and Career Ready.
And I'm Kristin McKenna. I'm the Director of College and Career Readiness. Our department was created about five years ago, and I've been a part of it now for four years. So prior to CCI being released, and then how that work has changed a little bit with its release.
So I wanted to start by just giving you a snapshot of our district. If you were to put a dot right smack dab in the middle of California, you would land almost on Madera. We are, we are literally the center of the state. What we say our claim to fame, we're two hours from Yosemite and two hours from the beach, so you can go either way and get to two destinations. And we are a rural area surrounded in agriculture, most recently growing in our health careers pathways as well as our manufacturing sector. But agriculture has been the staple for Madera for all the years. I'm born and raised Madera kid, so I've, I've spent my entire life there. And no matter which way you look, when you drive in or out of our town, you'll see agriculture. We are a K-12 district, and we have just under 20,000 students in TK to grade 12. When you look specifically at our 912 enrollment, we're about 5,500. And we currently have two comprehensive high schools, one continuation high school, one community day school. However, our third high school thankfully is under construction because one of our high schools will be at 3,500 next year, which is pretty large. So we will be opening our third high school in the fall of 2020. The majority of our students are Hispanic or Latino descent. It's about 86%. 89% of our students are low-income, with 30% entering into our school system as English learners. And then we have 70% of our students classified as Ever ELS. So we wanted to talk about how we are focusing our LCAP initiatives to start with on the College and Career Readiness Indicator. So our very first indicator in our LCAP is implementation of College and Career Readiness initiatives. So I've listed here a couple important steps in this work. I started at the district office five years ago as the Director of College and Career Readiness. And as I transitioned to Assistant Superintendent about 18 months ago, one major issue we had in our district is no guaranteed and viable curriculum in grades nine through 12. It had sort of been a free-for-all in secondary education. I see head nods, so that's not necessarily something new. But it was really important that we addressed that guaranteed and viable curriculum. And it's actually an initiative, grade seven through 12. Implementation of career pathways. When I started at the district office in 2014, we had a whole lot of CTE offerings, a lot of elective courses. The problem was they were not aligned to industry standards, they were not in pathways. And in all honesty, at that time, with the exception of our agriculture pathways, it really felt more like the old VOCED model where the non-college-bound students were being placed. So that was very quickly a, a priority for us. Targeted professional development for CTE teachers. Recently, Madera Unified has contracted with the National Institute of School Leadership. And much of our learning in that study has been around the need for professional learning for teachers. And the fact was, CTE teachers were not getting any type of professional learning or professional development in our district at that time. Most professional learning was for the core subject area teachers. Expanding student work-based learning opportunities, this is one I noticed earlier in the presentation, that has been a struggle for us. It, it hasn't been for lack of trying, but we really struggle with getting students in high-quality apprenticeships or work-based learning because many of our industries worry about the liability with placing students under the age of 18 in those positions. And we know there are some, some ways to navigate that, but that has been probably of all of our work, the slowest to really take hold and the most difficult. Concurrent enrollment middle school. In the fall of 2020, we will be opening what we're calling a concurrent enrollment middle school to sort of explain that. We have three middle schools that are 7 eights in our school district, which are currently pretty impacted, all right around 1,000 kids on campuses that were designed for like 600. And we needed a way to lessen that impact. And so what we are designing is a eighth-grade school that will embed project-based learning and integrated curriculum. So students in eighth grade will go to this school, and it's a lab-based school, around six career pathways. And they'll get two of their core elective, or core courses and one of their elective courses. So we'll have an AM and a PM session where in each of those 500 kids from all of our middle schools will apply to go into that. So we're very excited about that opportunity for our students. And that, again, will be opening in the fall of 2020. And then future career opportunities and career awareness exposure in the elementary years. We really want our students in Madera to understand about the career opportunities that exist in our community. And that's been a heavy focus. We developed and rolled out a grade six career exploration curriculum, and we are in our second year of that. And it's sort of the, the beginning work for our kids to really understand about career pathways. And the fact that career pathways can lead to college and career doesn't have to be an either or. We fully believe that. And we'll be able to tell you a little bit more about that. So currently, as I, as I mentioned earlier, Madera Unified now has true CTE pathways. So all of our pathways are three to four years, meaning that a student needs to stay in a pathway, sequenced three or four years in order to become a pathway completer. We now have 23 complete CTE pathways, bridging across 11 industry sectors. One big piece of work that Kristin's going to tell you about and she's been working on is our dual enrollment opportunities and A to G opportunities for our courses. In our CTE elective classes, 90% of those classes are now aligned to meet A to G requirements as well as CTE. And we believe that that is probably one of the most crucial pieces of this work because, as we know, it's college and career. And so in order to do that, we really needed to focus on high-quality rigorous programs, not just in our core areas, but our elective areas. And so 90% of our CTE courses are now receiving A to G credit. Prior to 2015, it was only 25%. So that's, I think Kristin's first year, we wrote, well, yeah, 18 courses. And that was a, a pretty big year for us. We're also very lucky to have industry partners that really are invested in education. It's, it was part of the work that we really focused on initially was bridging that gap back between the community and the stakeholder groups and getting them invested back into education and our kids. Our community, many of our kids and their parents and their parents are from Madera. They stay in Madera. And we need to ensure that our kids get the highest quality education in our community because we know many of them are going to stay there or come back there. And we want to make sure that we're doing the best job possible. And so part of that is really knowing the needs of the industry partners in our community. So we believe that strength in our CTE programs is because of the willingness of our industry partners. They, they come in at least twice a year and do curriculum planning with our teachers. And we also have sort of a hierarchy. So we have like a district advisory committee where all of our pathways are recognized. But then we also have the career pathway advisories. So our partners are, are very willing to give us their time to support this work.
So some of that work had, had started happening prior to CCI. And really, CCI finally gave us the lens to look at with our counselors, with our teachers, with our administrators, to be more collaborative in making student decisions and choices. For so long, it was kind of a one-size-fits-all scheduling process where eighth graders came in, what pathway do you want? Here's our options. Oh, my friend's doing this. Oh, I don't really have that exposure. And so it's really helped us put a higher priority for our students' attention and focus on more than just A to G completion. And that was really a very collaborative conversation between teachers and counselors and administrators to start working on that. And then really the counselor education piece. What does a career pathway look like? What is fabrication? Oh, that's just welding, you know? What are some of these industry-specific terminology that we use that they need to understand to better communicate with their students? One of the goals that we always tout is that our goal in Madera Unified is to have the highest number of students, have the widest array of post-secondary options with the greatest, greatest number of opportunities for college and career readiness. And so the parent education piece on this has been huge, and the counselor education piece. And it was in, one of my first meetings in this job, after she dragged me out of the class, classroom as a CTE teacher and into the district office, that I realized our counselors didn't exactly understand what this is like. And so we created these documents. And we have these for every single industry sector, and we call them kind of our quick glances for our counselors. So this is in the industry sector of agriculture. We have seven career pathways that students can choose from. And so the counselors can look at this and get some idea of what kind of jobs are associated with that. This easily tells them where college credit opportunities exist, which courses get A to G credit, and really those opportunities for students. And this started to create the conversation. And it really brought them to the table to see what else was out there. And that really led to dual enrollment. So Cheryl's first year in the role, Madera Center, and I have to kind of give our local community college credit, they are a willing participant in this. And they are a collaborative partner as we've grown dual enrollment. And they had originally come to Cheryl and said, let's try this in a few CTE areas. And so we tried it in welding, we tried it in midterm, and it went pretty well. And then as we started to grow and expand, even before CCI came out, we realized our students were finally getting an opportunity for success at college. And for a lot of them, that was their realization that I can do this after high school. And so once CCI and, you know, college credit came out as an indicator, it really helped to ramp it up. And you can kind of see our trend over the years. The following year, we dropped one section. We realized that the welding dual enrollment wasn't a fit for our high school CTE pathway because what the college wanted wasn't the same as our local industry partners' needs. And we wanted to make sure that our students graduating from our welding pathway, that were primarily being employed by our employers in Madera, were getting the type of students they wanted. And so we realized that we're not going to force something that's not a fit. It needs to make sense to our stakeholders as well. And so we kind of scaled back, and then we've been able to now re-ramp that up. In 1718, we grew to eight CTE sections, and we tried our first offerings in core. And so for the first time ever that year, we tried history. And we were able to use an adjunct, and we did history 11 and 12 dual enrollment on our high school campuses. All of these sections are representative of what's happening on our high school campuses. This is not students going to the community college. This is our teachers becoming adjuncts. This year, we're up to 16 sections in CTE with 11 in core, and we're anticipating next year another growth to 22 in 18. Now, these courses aren't just chosen by me. They're not just chosen by anybody. We've established a dual enrollment council that has looked at, that it's comprised of administrators, counselors, the college personnel, and the teachers. Obviously, one thing with dual enrollment is getting our teachers to meet minimum qualifications and making sure that it's the right fit for our curriculum side of things. Is it still meeting the same competencies? And is it still providing the same rigorous college CTE experiences that we expect? So for our students, this has been huge. It's a free opportunity for them to get their first taste of college success. And I was a little surprised when we were looking at the numbers, that only statewide 1 and 1/2% are meeting on this measure. For our district, that's higher. Just really quick, and looking at the CTE specific, most of our dual enrollment is in concentrator and capstone levels, so the second and third-year levels. And you can kind of see some of the areas that we're choosing to dual enroll. The one thing that we do do when it's a CTE course is the fall semester remains the high school course. This allows us to make sure that the CTE model curriculum standards are being met, that our industry partners' needs are being met, and that we front-load to make sure our students are going to be ready for the college rigor in the spring. Because we make sure that the rigor of the college course is remaining because we don't ever want our students to get into that college midterm class or the next level up and, oh, you did it as dual enrollment, no wonder you're not ready. And we stress that with our students is, as they move forward, this is a reflection on you and your practice. Really quick, ask on the dashboard. Although we're here, we're not perfect. And we are using the dashboard and the data to show us where we need to go. We are green for Hispanic, our socioeconomically disadvantaged students, and white. However, you'll notice we are red with students with disabilities. And we are currently in differentiated assistance for that. And we're really looking hard at what changes can we make to make these students prepared on the dashboard as well. And so we've been meeting a lot, not just on them, you know, we notice our English learners are right there in orange. And so how do we start to use the data? And we are fortunate that we have a great accountability team in Madera Unified that's guiding us through this process. And so they've started to even make predictions for 2019, 2020, 2021. And here's one example of it. So as of January of this year, this is our class of 2019, and the number of unduplicated students that we feel will be meeting something on CCI for prepared. And so you can see kind of who's meeting on SPAC, who's meeting on college credit. And now we have this at a per-student level. So I can pull out a student and see who's approaching prepared. What is it that it takes for them to be prepared? So that way, we can schedule. So obviously, for this year's seniors, it's going to be a little bit of hard to move that metric if they're not, already not in some of these things. So we're focusing our efforts on that freshman and sophomore class. Where are they and where can we push them? And our counselors are starting to use these tools when we meet with students and talk about career goals to make sure that we get the most students possible ready on the CCI, not just because it's a state measure, but because we know that's what's right for our And this is one other little kind of piece of data that we're looking at. We use multiple measures as well. And it's pulling AP, it's pulling SAT, it's pulling SPAC to really give us a profile of a well-rounded student. And so these are our class classifications on that. And we can see then of those students who is prepared, approaching prepared or not prepared on CCI, to see where we need to best approach kind of and target our students to indicate success. And this is just the word version of our presentation for accessibility reasons. So that is kind of our portion, if you had any questions.
I want to take questions for them now because they have to run back to Madera, right? Or drive.
I think running may take you a longer.
Running might take longer, yeah. It's only two hours by car. So are there, yes.
So first, I just want to thank you for the day-to-day work you
So first, I just want to thank you for the day-to-day work you all do to implement this in Madera. It's really a model for all of us and really is, your work is so appreciated. Just to reinforce, I really appreciate your goal for, which is on slide forty-eight, which our goal for students is to have the widest array of post-secondary options with greatest number of choices around college and career. I just really support that. I'm interested, you made a comment about counselors, and I'm particularly interested in, I think that's a really pivotal role at a high school and how this gets implemented from the theory that you all develop as leaders and how it actually gets implemented. So I'm interested in the training and support you give the counseling staff to translate this as they work with students.
Well, the biggest piece to that was when the Director of College and Career Readiness position was began, secondary counselors were put under our umbrella. So having that relationship with the counselors was key. Now, we're not their evaluators. However, we do meet with them monthly. The other probably big help in this was, they were right there with us because, like I mentioned, when the College and Career Readiness Department was formed, was the first year that talk had even been discussed. And the secondary counselors were from the start involved in that. They, one of the biggest hurdles to overcome is oftentimes, and we find our counselors, they reflect on their own personal experience. And so in doing that, you can imagine most of them graduated high school, went to the university, got their master's degree, completed their PPS, and came back. And now they're counseling students. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, before we referred to career technical education as career technical education, it was VOCED. And if you go back to that era, those courses weren't seen as rigorous. They weren't seen as the courses that you would put college-bound students in. And so we've had to really work on the mindset that the courses can be rigorous. What is the final piece to that is, though, the College and Career Readiness Indicator, actually having that to leverage the work. But Kristin can give you a little more insight on the professional learning component because she's had the one-on-one responsibility of that for about the last two and a half years.
So a lot of it did, and Cheryl's right, in, you know, stressing the rigor. When we look at our education pathway, so our students that do want to be K-12 teachers, and we know they're going to have to get a bachelor's and a credential, obviously, you know, that pathway has two honors courses in it. It's got nine credits of college credit that students will earn out of high school. And so we started taking the counselors into the classrooms, taking them in to meet with our students, bringing our Career Technical Student Organization students to our counselors to show kind of what was happening. In terms of the pathway charts, we review those every other month, changes, where do we see? And then the other thing that we're just starting to build in, which I'm really excited about, is that we're going to be working with the counselors on is, as we look at our courses that are intro, concentrator, and completer, we're starting to look at that data to make sure students are progressing through the pathways and they're not being misplaced. And so then we're able to say, hey, Ms. Counselor, this specific student was in this intro, was in this concentrator, why are they in this capstone that's not in the same pathway? So that way, we can start helping them to find the mistakes. And this is a tool that, it's not just me checking on them as a gotcha. It's a tool that they'll be able to use, and it's going to show flags of where we kind of need some pieces in place.
Other, yes?
Well, good afternoon, and thank you for coming today to share what you're doing in your program. I just have some questions on the way that you build out your programs, particularly your pathways. I looked at the slides that you have concerning the agricultural and natural resources program. And one of the things I am aware of that's part of what's going on at the state level to build out how the data system is reporting the classes that your students are enrolled in, there are some gaps in how some of the classes are identified or how they are collected or clustered out of CalPads right now to make sure that they show up in the report. What kind of work did you have to do with your counselors and even with the person who's responsible for doing the work with CalPads for reporting in your district to look at your courses and your course titles to make sure that all the work that you have listed here, for example, in these two slides, actually shows up in your data system and what's reported?
So when CalPads made the big change, we did find some things that we had done in 2015 that we had to modify and change because prior to that, we had some intro classes. For example, media arts, that was a feeder into our business pathway. And it was also a feeder into our arts, media, and entertainment pathway. And it was designed that way. Well, with CalPads and the new rules, we could not use an intro class in multiple industry sectors. And so it did cause us to go back and rewrite courses. In terms of the CalPads actual data entry, or making sure that our courses were using the proper code sets, I had just gotten back from maternity leave when that was released, and that was a large project. But we, you know, I felt like because of some of the steps that we had put into place prior to all of this happening, we were already looking at the vision of three courses. These pathways were vetted by industry professionals. We had done a lot of work already on CTE model curriculum standards. And so with the exception of a few courses that we had some issues with, for the most part, it was just a matter of changing our CalPads codes. And we were already using these pathway charts, so modifying these. Our counselors, I don't want to say they don't use the CalPad set, but they don't necessarily understand the behind-the-scenes. They understand that this is the sequence. Students need to take these courses in this sequence and get a C or better in each course. And I think that probably simplifies it a little bit. And then I, on the backside, work with our CalPads database administrator to make sure that all of the data is reading right and everything is coded properly.
Okay.
I think just to, she's selling herself just a little bit short, as you probably know. This is a lot of self-reported data for us right now. And so our counselors are not required. We don't have them actually go into our student information system and identify based on the pathways. And Kristin works with our department that oversees CalPads and then the coordinator in her department. And they literally go through it one by one. So it's still a little bit monotonous. And we will get to a place where the counselors will have more of a role in that. But it's, we really want high-quality data. And so to ensure that, right now, we sort of run that portion out of our office.
And then my second and last question is about the students and how they make their choices. It seems that with the increase in the number of pathways you're offering and the number of course options the students have, that your student population has changed over time from being students who are surveying, jumping from course to course or career pathway area to several, to being more certain about being a concentrator. So how do you, I know you said that the students work with the counselors to make those decisions, but how do you give or offer students those choices if the high school where they're actually supposed to go doesn't offer the pathway they may actually be interested in? How are those decisions facilitated at the student level?
So, great question. Kind of two things that we've done because we realized freshman year or February before their freshman year, picking a pathway that, right, we change majors in college all the time. So for a ninth grader to understand and pick a pathway that they're going to stay in isn't realistic. So we backtracked. And that's why we started the sixth-grade career exploration piece. So every sixth grader in Madera Unified gets to watch some videos and interactive curriculum online. And the first set talks about what is an industry sector? So what does manufacturing and product development do? What is an engineer? Really kind of the higher-level statewide thing. And then one of my favorite parts of the curriculum is what we call a local path. And so then the students get to watch these two- to three-minute clips of our CTE students, teachers, and facilities in Madera Unified. They get to see students interacting in the pathways and get a better understanding of what that means. And along with that, there's hands-on activities for the students to do. Now, that's not to say that coming out of sixth grade that they're ready to pick a pathway, but they're a little bit more educated as to what their options are. And then that builds into what Ms. Cecil was saying earlier on our concurrent enrollment middle school, which will be a CTE-focused school. That'll give them even more opportunity to expose a little bit earlier to hopefully make better decisions. Most of our pathways are duplicated at each high school, with the exception of agriculture is only at Madera South because it has a twenty-acre school farm. And engineering, architecture, and construction is only at Madera High School. And once the third high school opens, engineering and manufacturing are moving to the third high school. And then Madera High School will be construction, automotive, and semi-truck repair. And so for those specialized academies, we have a process called Career Academy of Special Interest, where students can choose to go to those schools or academies to be a part of those specialized schools. And, you know, those are very expensive programs and facilities to run. And so if we can focus our money and attention just at Ag for Madera South or just on, you know, this $200,000 piece of manufacturing equipment at Madera High School, it makes it a little bit more feasible for our students. And they still have the opportunity to pick something that interests them, even if that's not the high school they're supposed to go to.
Well, and I really want to thank you for the time that you've taken to explain that. And I'll have to tell you honestly, I knew that was going to be your answer, particularly about what you do with career exploration in the elementary grades. So far, you're the only elementary, you're the only district that I have spoken to on these matters that actually has a planned program for their early grades to help students start doing career exploration. Board Member Sun and Board Member Ortiz-Lacone and I are on a work group. We've been assigned to do work that includes the development and drafting of our new Perkins Five Plan. And one of the incentives in the plan is to encourage districts like yours to fund, with those new funds, work for their early elementary schools to look at this type of work that you're already doing. So I really do want to make sure I give you great praise and great respect for the work that you're already doing in that area. You're well poised to do this very well.
Thank you.
Board Member Sun?
Okay, so Board Member Rucker and I are on a same page. So thank you. The work you're doing is really inspiring, and I really appreciate all you've done. After all the work in the studying that we've done through the career pathways, workforce pathways, advisory committee, definitely the work that you're doing stands out and aligns with where we would like to go, California, in preparation, in preparing students for CTE. Now, I do, I'm curious about how the funding sources and how you utilize different funding sources to support this work. Because one of the things that we're trying to do is to figure out, well, you know, how are you taking pockets of money? Are you using local funds, CTIG, strong workforce? What kinds of funds are you doing? And then how does that work or not work, given all the different requirements of these funding sources?
So we've been fortunate. We were a round-one CCPT grant recipient in agriculture. We were a round-two recipient in education through a collaborative with Clovis and Sanger. And then we've gotten CTIG funds, we get Perkins funds, and just last week, we found out that we got some stronger workforce dollars. So we do leverage all of our funds. But the one thing that I'm fortunate for, and Cheryl will attest to, is our school board's commitment to this work. And most of, all of our salaries are covered out of LCFF. We are not using CTIG. We're not using some of the allowable funding sources to pay for our people. And so CTIG, we have really been able to buy equipment, tools, modernize facilities that desperately, in some cases, needed modernization, to really be able to leverage those funds. But we really do kind of look at everything and to better, best enhance our programs.
Okay, yes. Board Member Ortiz-Lacone?
Thank you. I also want to thank you for this very thorough presentation. You said a lot of things that I agree with. And one of the things that you said was, we know it's about college and career. And I thought, that's great because we thought it was about college and career. And that's what brought us to this meeting. There is a lack of understanding of this work is college and career, college or career, college slash career. And it's important because you also mentioned that you do a lot of work with your counselors to make sure there's equal rigor across these pathways. For some communities, in particular African-American and Latino community, the old system was considered a tracking system. So there has been some resistance around career pathways because people very much associate that with a tracking system. And if there is a lack of rigor and if somebody is tracking to a system and if counselors are playing a role in that, that's a problem. You know, there's thousands of stories. The one that comes to mind is Supervisor Ildasoliz, LA County Board. And she said that her counselor told her, you are going to be a secretary, when she inquired about college. And she was. She was a Secretary of Labor under President Barack Obama. But that's not what he meant. That's not what that counselor meant. And so it is important for us to have that common understanding across the system of what exactly are we providing? Are we giving students choice that would give them to an equal place or an equitable place? So I appreciate the work that you've done. I think you said some magic things here with "and" as well as rigor across the different pathways and making sure that our students truly have equitable choices and viable opportunities regardless of what pathway they take. Thank you.
Board Member Burr, and then Patio Bronson?
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to add my voice to congratulate you. And my deep appreciation for how your district has embraced what CCI was intended to do. And I was reflecting on, I appreciate both Cindy and Jenny doing the walk down memory lane. But if you look, remember back what Jenny said about the original findings by Dr. Conley, that the single most important predictor is course-taking of college success and that dual enrollment was right behind it. So you're embodying the research that we heard about a couple of years ago. I also, I just wanted to also say that your use of data is also very exemplary. And I'm so appreciative to hear of districts that are using the data to decide how to provide the best opportunities for students, not how do we do test prep courses, which is what we were doing, as you recall, under the old API. So again, my congratulations for that. And I appreciate the conversation about the funding because I just, being the finance geek that I am, want people to remember that when we developed LCFF, we collapsed all of those categorical programs, including ROP, much to the chagrin of a number of ROP directors. But for many of the reasons that Board Member Ortiz-Lacone and I think Board Member Rucker talked about, that some of those courses, and I think you touched on that, were really not of the rigor that they needed to be to ensure that students had the best success. But I bring it up because there is substantial funding in LCFF via the transfer of the ROP money and because we gave an adjustment to high schools to recognize the additional costs for CTE courses. So again, just kudos for all the work that you're doing. I really appreciate hearing about it.
Board Member Patio Bronson?
Also, I'll join the chorus of thank yous for sharing your work. In particular, want to call out congratulations on aligning the A through G and CTE courses to go from twenty-five percent to ninety percent is a tremendous and very tangible accomplishment. The follow-up question that I wanted to ask is, if you have data that shows to what degree students actually float, if it is sort of a fluid continuum where children are, or students are trying to figure out which pathway they want to take, do you have a sense as to whether they get locked in early or there is actual fluidity? And then the second question that I'll just ask, given that we will be hearing a report back from a couple of work groups about additional college and career readiness measures to think about, are there others that you would want to lift up for our consideration from your perspective in Madera?
Sure. So in terms of like the fluidity piece to start, we do know that our students do occasionally after freshman year say, yep, not for me. I thought I liked nursing, and then there was that lab with blood and not my thing. So those are, in my opinion, just as important of decisions to make as the other way as well. You know, if we can make that determination early rather than when you're in college, it's helpful. But we don't have a percent on that, but it is something that we could look at and pool. In terms of the second question, did you want to take that one or?
Remind me, second portion?
Yeah. So what would you say is a good proxy that we are currently missing as a good measure of college and career readiness, but one that isn't encompassed within the current set of measures?
So the one that I know we talked a lot about and haven't necessarily found a way to quantify it would be, in all of your CTE pathways, the expectation is that they conclude with an industry certification. And so if there were a way to value the industry certification component, because that is something, we talked about it initially, and again, that's another component for our pathways. for our pathways, is the industry certification. And in some pathways, it's far more difficult to find an industry certification. But similar to what we used to get with the ROP, sort of skills that would be identified, competencies, there are ways that, you know, when students complete a pathway where there's maybe not a industry certification that we're able to provide for that, and that you can do more of a competency-centered approach. And so we, we talked a lot about it initially, and had heard even at some point that that would be coming as, as part of the CCI, but understanding that, that that's a little more difficult to track. But I know that the industry certification, because that really values that career component of college and career. And if they can earn an industry certification, that points to the rigor of, of that pathway. Any other one?
Other board members? Mr. Hama?
I'll just make a, I know you have to be on the road, and you have to, you have to be speaking in like two hours. So I just want to say, thank you for leading the work in the Central Valley with the CCI indicator. I think it's, you've done, you're a perfect example of what, like, Board Member Burr said, a perfect example of what this indicator was supposed to do. So briefly, have you seen any changes for improvement in your middle schools in the way they look at data as a result of this indicator?
For our middle school? So one of, one of the pieces I'm not sure that was mentioned, after we do the sixth grade component, we will actually be rolling out, we, so our middle school elective programs and core programs have required some attention. I mentioned the lack of a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Also, in our middle schools, our elective programs had been slowly just not kept up to date, not supported. There were very few offerings. And in order for there to really be a K-12 look at college and career readiness, we identified the middle school as an area where we needed to focus. And so we will be starting next year, a, a career-focused seventh-grade elective option. What we didn't share is our, our pathways that are the most highly desired are agriculture, manufacturing and engineering, health careers, public safety, business and entrepreneurship, and the visual and performing arts. And so that's the six labs that will be recognized in our CTE-themed middle school. But in order, again, for the kids to be able to make a quality choice, that sixth grade is really the, the opening. We give them the opportunity to see it from a global perspective, but also what it looks like in Madera, California. And then now next year, for the very first year, we have a seventh-grade elective that, it's not a all, a required elective for all students, because we still have, like, what I refer to as the Americana, so there's still band, there's still choir. But we really have done away with just haphazard electives, and really tried to, to build that up. So the work that Kristin and her coordinator and her department are doing is now starting to transition into the focus on the middle school. And what we're hoping, because I know this was asked earlier, is, you know, kids in and out of pathways, by giving them sort of a grand view in sixth grade, and then really being focused on furthering that information in seventh, giving them an opportunity to take a, a really true pathway-themed eighth-grade elective. We're hoping that by the time they get into high school, they will have had three years of opportunities to sort of experience the pathways. And so the middle school really became a catalyst for that work. So that's really the, the focus right now. Kristin has been spending probably the lion's share of her work now around the, taking the elementary and the middle school component to continue to build the strength into our 912.
Other board members? Our student board member just got here from Oakland, so we'll welcome Emma or Dennis to introduce to our, she's been following you on, as she's been traveling here, so she's our final board member.
Thank you.
So any more, I know our presenters have to travel, so any more clarification or comments from the board before we move on? So we're not still done with our presentation. Thank you both for all your work and for your commitment to being here today. So Cindy, we turn it back to you.
Great. Well, this is a great transition into what, what's going on for this, this current year, and then what's going on for next year with CalPads and development out of, of measures. You may recall, we've, we've given you a couple of updates over the last year and a half of measures that we were going to add to CalPads, and our timing of that. I, I just wanted to walk through one example to show you that it's not something that we can just turn on in a system. We have to be very thoughtful about this, and it does take a year or more to, to do a new data collection. So the example I wanted to use was state syllabi literacy. We were collecting that at the aggregate level. We were simply asking, "How many certificates do you need to give out to your students?" Up until summer of 2017, which was the first time we asked for information in CalPads at the student level. So we now have two full years of, of collection on state syllabi literacy, which is why we were able to include it and make a recommendation to you all to include it in the dashboard for 2018. So think about, you know, bringing, bringing something on, providing students an opportunity to demonstrate that they've had success in, in completing something. This is something that, that onboarding is not, again, something that's done overnight. We do collect, we are planning on collecting clear measures this year, as Jenny mentioned, through our two data systems, through CalPads, and then our California Special Education Management Information System, which you can forget about after this year, because it's being folded into CalPads. That's the big move for CalPads, is bringing casemask into, to CalPads, which is why, when we talk about adding measures to CalPads, my, my colleagues cringe, because the big move is to give our special, our Selpa directors, our Selpas, access to CalPads, which is a huge security, measures that have been, had been put in place, and there's just a lot of development work on this. So we are, we are ready to, to, to begin collecting that information, which has officially been in our Special Education Management Information System in 2019, 2020. So the measures that Jenny briefly talked about are actually listed here on, on this slide for, for this year. So when Madera showed their dashboard for CCI, and they had students with disabilities in the red, Jenny said, "Well, that's not surprising. We don't actually measure and allow special, our students with disabilities to show success." And so you can see at the bottom there, I'm going to start with that one first as my example, is through casemask, we're actually able to now start collecting a couple of things that we think are going to be very, very powerful for that student group. Completion of workability program, transition programs offered by DOR, Department of Rehabilitation, and work-based learning. So those measures will give us a fuller picture of what our special education student population has been doing all this time. It's just lack of a data collection that has not been able to show or demonstrate success. So with CalPads, we're going to pick up completion of state or federal drug program, which is limited to our dashboard alternative school status. And these recommendations did come through our task force. I have to mention that the casemask piece, we also took to our, your advisory commission on special education. So they have been a great way of vetting measures for our students with disabilities. The completion of pre-apprenticeship, and then workforce readiness certificate. In 2019, 20, our colleagues in our career, College of Career Transition Division, Michelle McIntosh and Peter Callis led an effort earlier this spring, actually, it was maybe even late winter, to bring together a very small group of very passionate folks, like who you heard, heard from today at Madera, who know about definitions and helped advise us on definitions to add to CalPads for student-owned businesses and internships. So we'll pick up those this, this coming year through our end-of-year collection. And then the last component that has been mentioned in passing is career readiness assessments. We are intending to pick up information around career readiness assessments in, in 1920. So how, you know, passage of that, how we actually incorporate it in the system, I'm not quite sure, right? Part of it is you get the data, and then what do you do with the data, and how do you measure, how to move forward on it to bring forward ideas, not only to the stakeholder groups, but to our technical design group. Finally, industry certifications were made, or as I actually mentioned, by, by Madera, prompted by, prompted by your question, and that was very timely. So we are in the process of developing an application for industry, individual industry credentials. And so there is work that has been, been done through our College Career Transition Division that will be ongoing. But you heard the heavy lift, and if we had this figured out nationally, we would have adopted that already. So there is no set standard out there, but there is a lot, a lot of excitement around this area, and it sounds like this has been the focus, at least from our colleagues and in our College and Career Transition nationally, is the focus is moving towards industry certification. So we have some work to do on, on that data collection, and how to evaluate, how to bring it in. So with that, we can start moving to a larger discussion of, not only reminding you of the intended purpose, because this is a duplicate slide, but I thought I would take the opportunity on this slide to mention perhaps something I haven't mentioned yet. When we first designed the College Career Indicator, we did not have a Grade 11 academic indicator. And for those of you that have been on the board for the last 18 months, you know that through our negotiation process with the U.S. Department of Education, we were asked, or the negotiation process had us add that to the academic indicator. And so the original design, you know, had smarter balance as, as a main part of the College Career Indicator, it continues to be, but now it is also counted for our high schools and for our unified school districts in the academic indicator. So I just wanted to point out that that is something that we're very much aware of, and want to, want to make sure that we mention that as part of the discussion. So here's our, our framing. We have two, two, two questions that we're going to pose. The first, and I'll defer to Vice President Strauss, who I think is now leading the meeting, on how to proceed. But we think that, based on the conversation we've heard from you over the last three years, that there are two different versions of the College Career Indicator, or college and career, or what have you. So students, first is students should have the choice from the outset of their high school years to pursue coursework with a focus on preparing for college or career upon graduation. And students can pursue either path, or potentially both, throughout high school, and choose coursework that best prepares them for that path. Schools provide access to a broad array of courses, so that students can pursue whatever path they choose. You heard some of that this, today, right, in Madera? So let's talk about the other vision, what schools should be doing, since this is a school accountability, school and district accountability system. Schools should provide all students with a broad course of study that prepares them to leave high school with the ability to choose to pursue college or career. Schools provide coursework that best prepares students for both college and career. Students decide at the end of high school which path to pursue, but are fully prepared for either path. So here's the question. Which vision should guide our continued development of the College Career Indicator model?
So just to Cindy and to board members, we're, we're going to take a break. And so the question is, do you want to finish it all first? Because we're going to have board comments, just clarifying questions, then we're going to go to public comment and come back for the board discussion. So where's the right time?
Why, I, I think I have four more slides after that, and it poses a second question.
Okay. Then we'll take a break, and then we'll come back for clarifying questions first. Okay?
Okay. So the other piece of this is looking at the modeling that we've been, been using, which is a predictive model. So we've been analyzing the CCI measures based on a correlation of English Language Arts and Mathematic Smarter Balance Assessments. It was originally, again, correlated against the STAR EAP. So the model is, by design, correlated to college readiness, not career readiness. And the placements across the three levels have been, again, correlated to performance on Smarter Balance Assessments. So as an example, what percent of students meet the prepared level on the College Career Indicator measure meet or exceeded standard on Grade 11? So that's one of the, that's been the mainstay. This model is based on the assumption that students who place in, in prepared in college and career would succeed in college and career. So that's been the, the, the modeling that we've done to date. So here's the data that we've shown you. This is not, not new data. These are the standalone measures. We're, we're showing it more, now that we've got eight measures built out, we're going to show you this information. So this is how we've done the, the work. This is the work that Jenny Singh and her staff do prior to it coming, not only to stakeholders, but to the technical design group. So this is for our standalone measures, you can see how the AP college course information, and then syllabi literacy stacks up on the levels one and two for English Language Arts, level three and four, English Language Arts, who's received those levels, and then on the mathematics, again, level one and two are grouped together, and then three, three and four. When we look at the measures that have required additional criteria, you can also see that same information. We do not break apart A through G. You'll see that on the next slide about the reasons why. But the three that have the plus is A through G, plus S back, plus CTE pathway, and then CTE pathway plus S back. So those are the combination and the data behind that information. So one of the original rationale, and I don't think I need to spend very much time on this, about the A through G placement levels, was simply because, just because students were simply taking the EAP, didn't show that they were meeting the same rigor that we would expect on, on our Grade 11 assessments. So the information here, about only 40% of students admitted, well, rather, 40% of students admitted had to enroll in remedial coursework. So that was very, very telling for us about why it should not have been, it needed to have an "and" criteria, it could not be a standalone criteria by just completing A through G by itself. The other piece of the CTE pathways, and why there needed to be an addition for that, was along the same line. So 64% of students were scoring not ready. So really, they were, needed an additional help if they were to, again, head, head off to, to college or post-secondary. So this is the second part of the discussion questions. Does the State Board of Education want to continue to use this predictive model for individual student success post-high school? And what should the methodology for evaluating the measures be going forward? So if there's continued use of the smarter balance for the analysis, what degree of correlations, and for which subjects? Are we looking at English Language Arts and math, or just English, English Arts by itself and math by itself? And then, you know, we do have all these new career measures being collected. What is the new methodology that you would suggest that, that guides us in development to determine rigor for those additional career measures? If they're not tied to the smarter balance results, if you'd like us to continue to, to continue to use the predictive model? So there's a lot going on here, and I'm sure you're all ready for a break. So there we go.
Just, just to clarify, so we're going to take a 10-minute break, and we come back, I think board members have some clarifying questions about some of the material that's been presented, and then, but we won't do our discussion. Then we'll go to public comments, and then we'll come back and have a robust discussion. And at that time, Cindy, we'll ask you to go back and say the areas that you'd like our discussion areas and anchor that as well.
Okay.
Okay? So at this point, we're going to take a 10-minute break.
We are reconvening. And I think we want to ask Cindy Kazanas to come back to the podium, so that we can ask you clarifying questions. I would encourage board members not to go deep into the deep dive yet, because we have public comment. But if you had any questions... Patricia has a question? Okay. Board Member Rucker has a question.
Okay. So with the admonition not to go into the deep dive, I will wait on some of the questions that I do have that are a deep dive. Looking at the discussion frame that you've given us, I'll save that for when we turn to our discussion frame. But I do have some questions on, some things that I heard from the Madera folks that you all just kind of lightly touched on, that I'd like you to add some clarification to. One of the questions that I asked the Madera presenters was about how they straightened up their data collection issues, particularly given the differences across the state about how CTE courses are named, and how they're clustered and categorized and reported in the CalPads data system. And they talked about the work that was done by the department to try to add some clarity to this, and try to simplify, and I'm using the word simplify on purpose, because I want you to explain what happened, how to, what was done to clear some of that complexity and differences up. So could you, so they just simply said that was done. They received a memo, they were told how to make changes in their reporting for these classes and these courses. That was not something you all covered, but this was, that was, that, that effort that you all did was very important to what cleaned up and what added some clarity, some specificity, as well as some gains or improvements that many districts showed when we began to do a better job of collecting information about their CTE course offerings. So could you please explain what the issue was, and actually what the department did to clear this up, and to try to improve what that reporting looked like? And the reason I'm asking this, because you and I have had this conversation for several years, and I think it's important for the board to hear about that. several years, and I think it's important for the board to hear about that.
Happy to do so, and I mean, I hope you can help if I'm not giving you the level of specificity that you would like. So what was started, CTE was the first subject area in which CalPads went in and looked at the 20-year-old course descriptions and did a huge overhaul to bring it up to the 21st century. So what happened in CalPads as a result was a lot of changes in coding that needed to be done. And when we ever, when we ever contemplate adding something or changing something in CalPads, keep in mind that districts typically don't access that system directly. They're using a local student information system that then accesses CalPads. So we have a relationship with all of the Student Information Services vendors across the state, of which there's, you know, like, I know Michelle's brought at least one before you to talk about electronic score reports, but for example, Ares has well over 50% of the market in California. So somebody like Ares would build this out and mock it up. So we work with our student information system vendors. But then for the CTE piece, we went out into the field and we did a series of trainings regionally. We have now taken this a step further, and we're now doing this with all of our courses. So this last year, Barbara Murchison's staff has led the effort in the department to come up with relevant information related to whether or not they're core, related to common core. So there's been a huge overhaul in, you know, things that have existed in the same fashion for 20 years or more. What this means for boots on the ground is unless you do something like Madera does, there may continue to be a disconnect between what they are inputting at a school site, then transferring to their local student information system, then transferring to CalPads. We have, you know, Catalina Suentez is here from Riverside as our Deputy Superintendent. And when she came, she talked about how much work she did at, with districts, individual districts cleaning up their CalPads data. So I'm, I can hear her echoing in my ears about how much effort that takes. But I think to your point, Madera is unique in that they actually said, we wanted to ensure data quality, so we kept it to a small, a small group of people, and we didn't, we didn't spread it out. So there is, there is quite a bit of work to be done when you, when you do something like that on the CTE pace. I do believe that we are getting richer data and that they are aligning it now that we have the College Career Indicator, we're able to provide them back how students are, what measures students are showing, prepared for, and so they're able to actually reflect in their own systems how individual students are measuring preparedness. So do you want me to get in more detail, or is that?
No, I think, I think just, I asked that question just so you could give that general overview, because I think it's important for all of my colleagues on the board to know that there's been a lot of work done to improve how data is captured, particularly about CTE courses, because there have been so many different categories of CTE programs reported in CalPads. And you all underrepresented the amount of work that you did across the state level, as well as more granularly down at the school side and district level about what was done to try to improve what was reported and ultimately upload into CalPads. I think it's very important to know that that work has gone on, because, and the reason I ask that question is because I have in the back of my head, my former colleague Jim Ashwandan's voice echoing in my mind, that we were not collecting the diversity of the type of CTE offerings that are actually happening in schools. And so the CCI is not reflecting all the work that's actually going on. And so I think the work that you all have done has actually improved that. So just that overview was good.
Thank you.
So I have one more question.
Okay. Can we keep it a clarifying question and not a deep dive?
Okay. So then my other clarifying question is related to, and this is also a conversation that we have had, is related to the types of capacity that other stakeholders in the process we are working on have for collecting data about our K-12 students and college and career readiness. And I'm talking in particular about the types of data systems that board member Sung and board member Ortiz-Lacone and I have seen that the community colleges and the universities are doing in putting together data about college preparation for our K-12 students. I think it's important, and again, this is not a question for a deep dive, but that's not something, at the time when we did the work on the three types of research underpinnings that are on Slide 15, that's not information we were actually aware of, and those are not capacities that we knew about and that I didn't find out until very recently when we started this work on the joint workforce pathways. I think that that's a conversation that we still need to be aware of. That's a presentation about capacity and the type of information and the differences in that information that this board still needs to be aware of, because it informs the work that we have already done. And I think that that's a conversation we have to have as well. So I'm putting that out there as a clarifying question to just simply ask you to state that there are other types of data systems collecting this information about the same group of students we're talking about that are represented in the CCI. But I also want to make sure, we put a pin in that, because it's a conversation, a request for information, a presentation to this board I've asked for, and I'm still asking for that to happen.
Okay. We'll put a pin in that longer conversation. Do you have a quick response to the clarifying question?
I think if anything, what I said in the beginning about the governor's cradle to career proposal, we will be doing a deep dive on this with that lens that we can bring back. But I also wanted to mention that at the end of Professor Kurlander's conversation, her last slide, she talks about the fact that she now has access to National Student Clearinghouse data, and the department will be actually producing a college-going report for the first time in Data Quest this summer. So we are, we finally have pieces of data that we have never had access to, we're going to get access to, but to your point about leveraging existing data systems that have similar data, while we are the primary data source of that data, there are others that are using it and displaying it in different fashions. And so the great, the work group, we have a meeting with our segment partners for the last six months and are getting to know their data intimately, and they're getting to know our collections intimately. So if anything, I think that will be a driver in that direction on steroids. It's going to be really amazing, assuming that the legislature, you know, goes with the governor's proposal about how it's, how it's put together.
All right. Board member Burr.
Cindy, could you just go back a couple slides to the two different visions for the CCI and clarify, I think for our next conversation and for the public input, which of these visions do we currently follow in the CCI?
Well, the vision that we've been following has been dedicated towards the school aspect of things. And just affirming with Jenny, I always need to affirm with Jenny that I've got my technical pieces on board. But we keep, in our discussions with stakeholders and with you all, there's an interest in talking about students. And so, you know, a student vision, and so that's why we've brought number one to the forefront.
But I think it's just important to know which one we've built the indicator on so that if we're going to switch gears, which we can certainly do, it would take a lot of doing, which I think are your subsequent questions. I just wanted to clarify, especially for new members, so that they understood at least where we are now. Again, doesn't mean we can't be somewhere different, but just wanted to clarify.
That's helpful. And I just want to mention, we've had requests for, you know, we want to get a seal on our diploma, that we're prepared, and this is because we've been approaching this as a school-level preparedness. There is no student-level file that is returned back to districts at this point. That would be a large resource issue for us, but, I mean, this is, this is the conversation that we hope that you will have.
All right. And, remember.
So that actually then touches on the question I had. So the charts that you have on Slides 68 and 69, so by, the way that this data is collected, the schools report the students who have met one of these criteria. The department takes that. Now, we could have students who met more than one of those, but what it seems like, I just could hit a quick spreadsheet on the numbers here.
Oh, no.
Is that what we're seeing here are only students who met that particular one criteria. So we don't know if there are students who have met more than that. It's not, it's not an unduplicated count. You're right. You're right. Yeah. So it would, I think it would be helpful, because I think, you know, I bet that the students who took two advanced placement also has A, has met A through G, and, you know, some of those other things. And I think it would be interesting to see that. Do we have students who have taken two AP exams but didn't meet A through G? And if that's the case, then do we want to say, is that really what we mean by college ready? Is that you could take two exams, you can be super smart, take two AP exams, and you're good to go? And do we really want to say that? So I will save that question. But, but just, I think the data is a little, collection of the data, and like you said, you know, a way that you can give back to the schools information, because it's not just what the schools have reported, you also get information from college board. And so for schools to understand, well, which students met which criteria, or how are you counting this particular student, student A, even if they had three or four, did you count them under this, or did you count them under another criteria? See what I mean? I just think that would provide us fuller information.
That would be a giant matrix. For those who love matrices. Yes, yes, I see. Member Felice Lincoln.
It's okay. It's like Felice Lincoln.
Right, right, right.
It's okay. I'm just fair. My question for you is, going back to the two different visions, are we, so are we also looking at different visions or unit of analysis? Report, at what level are we going to report? Because these are two visions, but right now we report at the school level. Are you saying we could change the vision and also report at the student level? Or are you just saying, what two visions are we leaning towards, and it would still be a report for the school level, not the student level?
I don't think that we've predetermined anything for this discussion. With a student-level report back, though, again, that we'd have to look at resources around that. It's not something that we've, we set out thinking that we were going to head that direction, but we can definitely have that discussion.
Well, I didn't either, but based on what we have here is at the student level and at the school level, so the vision would just be, do we want students to select if they want to go college or career? Or do we want the schools to set up a system where the students are college and career ready, and then they decide where to go?
Okay. Let's do that. Let's try to stretch. Now that we need to get to public comment, there are people here that want to present, and we want them to have that opportunity, so.
We have three people signed up for public comment. Renita Guha, Mary Perry, Roman Sterns.
Okay. And state your name and affiliation for the record, and glad to have you.
Hello. Good afternoon. I'm Renita Guha with the Link Learning Alliance, Vice President for Strategy and Impact. Thank you, President Darling Hammond, and members of the board for taking up this discussion today. As you know, the Link Learning Alliance is a coalition of educators, employers, researchers, policymakers, and community leaders that believe in the power of college and career readiness for all students. We appreciate your thoughtfulness on the topic today and the time you've spent delving into it, and particularly your questions and comments that you're raising. We also want to appreciate the hard work of the department and state board staff who have spent countless hours over the past several years seeking input from the field. We're hopeful that your interest will lead to an alignment of our accountability system with the goals of our public education system to prepare students for college and career. And we ask you to consider how to measure career readiness specifically by involving employers and industry leaders. And we encourage you to examine what local districts are already doing around data collection. So thank you for your time, and we stand in solidarity and will continue to support you around this work.
Great. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Perry. I'm Vice President for Education for the California State PTA. And to cut right to the chase, the purpose of the CCI, I believe, is to signal to educators and the public the kinds of educational experiences that students should have and that schools should offer to all students. We are right now dealing with this technical configuration of this measure, based in part on the fact that it's been limited to the data that was available. What we haven't done is to step back and say, what do we really want for our kids? What is the North Star? And I believe it has to be college and career, because it is 2019, and those are not separate things. So what I would ask the board and the department to continue to pursue are the kinds of measured things that can be done with the CCI.
Time.
To underscore college and career.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Roman Sterns. I am with some partners and school districts, launching a statewide partnership called Scaling and Sustaining Student Success in California. And I'll be focused on working with communities to operationalize their graduate profiles in ways that better focus student success on college and career readiness in a more holistic and equitable way. I'd like to reinforce what colleagues Mary and Renita have suggested, that we focus on college and career readiness, but also suggest that we roll the microscope and think about what is it that we're measuring? Because we're having a lot of conversation about measurement and metrics and a college career indicator, but we have not yet established a definition for college and career readiness. So it feels like we're putting the cart before the horse. And I know that there's eagerness in the field to resolve this and kind of learn more, and I know that you've done a lot of work towards this.
Time.
I'd like us to roll the microscope, take a step back.
Martha Alves with the Association of California School Administrators, or AXA. So later this week, we'll be releasing a report that I brought some copies here today with some recommendations about improvements to the dashboard and the individual metrics. One of them happened to be the CCI. AXA supports a robust college and career metric, and I think that that's been one of the confusions for the field, is it college and/or, is it you get to choose? But I think we also understand and recognize that it needs to come with investment from the state legislature and the governor, that as we strive to have more robust expectations for kids in California, we also need to meet those demands and increase standards with additional funding. In terms of what CDE and the state board have been focusing on, we continue to support CDE's efforts to collect more data, but we believe that it needs to be aligned with better training for the student information vendors, Ares, Power School, and school administrators, so that we can actually capture the new information you want for the CCI.
Time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Huling Lee, and I'm the Executive Director for statewide working group called POCRES, which stands for Promoting Authentic College Career and Civic Readiness Assessment Systems. I want to echo my colleagues, Roman Sterns, Mary Perry, and Renita Guha for emphasizing the "and" piece. But I also want to encourage the state to build up that vision of what success looks like and reverse engineer and figure out what are the components of success? Because right now, we are building from the ground up in terms of what's available, but we can actually be steering kids in a direction that may not necessarily prepare them for life success. So I think there, we should have a conversation about what should graduates know and are able to do. And most of the time, we're focusing on what students should know, but not necessarily what they should be able to do. Thank you.
Good afternoon. President Darling Hammond, members of the board, I'm Dean Drescher on behalf of Ed Voice. I don't think I can say it any better than my colleague Mary Perry at the PTA said it. I thought she said it perfectly. So we urge the board to define that North Star, and we express our support for that explicit definition of college and career by having a CCI as a measure of both college and career readiness. It's a step to ensure that all students have equitable opportunity to reach their full potential. And so we just urge you to make that clear today. Thank you very much.
Now, it's time for us to have discussion. And so I want to both open that up, and I was reminded by colleagues of the fact that I think it was Hemma who earlier had suggested we might want to rename the indicator as post-secondary success indicator, so that we could get out of the cycle of college and/or career. And I think that these comments reminded me of that good suggestion that we should maybe keep in the front of our thoughts as we proceed. So there are a number of questions before us about both the nature of the tools, and in fact, I think we would like Cindy to come back and put our questions in front of us so that we can reflect on those together.
So the first, the first part that we had was about the vision, whether or not we should look at the students to guide the vision, or that schools should provide this broad course of study access. And then we talk a bit about the predictive model. And then we talked a bit about the predictive model and how you would suggest onboarding our additional career measures. So what is the, sort of the methodology question for going forward too?
And do you want to sort of just repeat for us the additional career measures? I know Jenny mentioned a number of them as she went along, but work-based.
Here we go. So the career measures that we're collecting in the current year is completion of state or federal job program, completion of pre- or apprenticeship, workforce readiness certificate. And again, some of these are limited to alternative schools. Others are for both traditional and alternative. And then for our students with disabilities who have an individualized education program or an IEP, we're going to pick up these three additional ones at the bottom. Completion of workability program, tradition programs offered by Department of Rehabilitation, and work-based learning.
And then others that are under consideration?
Student-owned businesses and internships for next year.
And internships would be like work-based learning experiences that have some definition?
Yes, so we are, we've, I think we've landed on a definition. I can't remember if we included it in our materials. We'll double check on that. Can provide that to you.
And then we also consider having a set of courses. Is it true that we already consider or beginning to consider having two courses in a capstone? In a CTE sequence or that's? We're already doing that, yeah. I just wanted to be sure that people understood what was already in, what's being added.
CTE is already in there. And that requires the completion of a capstone course.
Mm-hmm.
With a C minus or better.
Which is usually preceded by at least a couple of.
Yes, it has to have at least one other course. And now that we revamped our CTE, we can start doing different analysis on the data that comes in to determine which, if students who are taking two years versus three years, if there's a difference in their performance so that we can determine if, if you take three years, we should maybe put you up to well-prepared when we get that category versus two years would stay at prepared. So there's additional analysis that will be done on CTE as we move forward.
Mm-hmm. And so part of the question is what those indicators might be. And the other part is how they might be validated and whether they need to be validated against the S-Back as a standardized test, which was not particularly constructed for measuring careers. So that's, I think, two of the questions on the table for us. As well as this question of college or career and how do we acknowledge that? And so I think the other piece that we have on the horizon is getting to a four-level system of prepared and well-prepared. And the question of how college and career may represent itself in that fourth level is part of the framework that we want to have in mind. Cindy, are there other things you want to direct us around?
I think just to bring it back to the data piece about students, because that was brought up towards the end. Keep in mind that we collect really the most important pieces of data at the end of the year. So as far as who's completed which courses, giving information from the test vendor for IB and AP is something that is done mid to late summer. And we do a dual process of that data. When we pull it out of CalPads and we dual process it for purposes for accountability. So really, in actuality, the soonest that a school or district could get access during a private preview is November. The students that we're talking about have already left that school. So just keep in mind, you know, even when we talk about like post-secondary, whether or not we'd grab, you know, students who have gone to college and bring something back. If we're thinking, if we even go that broad, think about the usefulness of something at the student level is what I would say is like, you know, we lose out on the opportunity to impact students because they've now left the program. The impact would be to the program and making sure that the programs are strong at a school. And that's been somewhat of the intended purpose from the outset.
All right. Board Member Ortiz-Lacon. Oh, okay.
I wanted to recall a conversation that we had previously where we said maybe that fourth level, well-prepared, would be our "and", college and career, and we just weren't there. I remember that conversation. I do remember the post-secondary. For me, that would be "or" and, you know, would be if you could, we fall under post-secondary indicator. It could be both you're college and career ready or you're college or career ready. That for me sounds more like number one. And I really want to push for number two. Because number one makes a lot of assumptions that students, I'm thinking first-generation college students would know if there, no one in their family has ever gone to college, then they may not know that that's a viable choice, that that's an option that they have because they haven't been exposed to it. Or undocumented students. Maybe right now, they have to make a decision based on their current legal status. And hopefully, a policy could change later on. And we want to make sure that they also keep in mind that college could be an option, that career can be an option. But that doesn't seem like an option right now because legally, they cannot pursue either/or. Or if they could pursue college, it's just unaffordable to them. So I want us to consider that our students are not all at the same starting line. They're not all, they don't all have the same profile. They don't all have the same choices to make an accurate choice. I believe that we need to consider all of our students. And, you know, I've heard before when people say college is not for everybody, they're not talking about their own children. And I want to believe that we are talking about all of our children, 6.2, not just my two at home that I've already decided they're going to college. I want to make sure that we afford that opportunity and prepare students for that option as well.
So I just want to, first of all, thank the public for the comments as well that I think share a lot of the work that we've all been, kind of as this has been growing and developing. But I believe we have a state priority that says access to a broad course of study. And that we have, as schools, I'm talking more about number two now, schools have a responsibility to provide students with a broad course of study and access to it. And I would say, not all 14 and 15-year-olds make choices that actually, they have some bumps in the road in high school. If you've led high schools and worked in high schools, there's challenges that are not only academic. Life comes in the way, friends, all kinds of things. And so kids get chances to make up, to redo, to change course. And so we, I believe, the accountability is around what schools should provide for students. And so I appreciated particularly Mary's comments from State PTA, which I think encapsulate a lot of comments about that we should provide students the coursework. The other thing is we should provide rigorous courses of study for all students and not make choices where they don't get access to it. I mean, in my dissertation study, when I looked at students who were going through the pathways, they woke up in 11th grade and said, oh, my God, now I can't, I don't have enough time to make up all the coursework. And so there are processes where counselors and schools can intervene. But I think we have a responsibility to give kids that option. The second thing is, in the conversation we've had about well-prepared or well-prepared, we had a discussion about is A to G enough? Or is it A to G with another measure, which was smarter balance? But you can think about kids in high school that take all kinds of pathways. So even if they take college and career, they take A to G coursework, which is broad course of study. They may be an orchestra student. They may be a band student. They may be a sports, playing football and doing practice. And so we should give them the options. But some kids still are taking seven periods a day and are barely having time to sleep. So I think it's our responsibility to provide the access to the rigorous course with options for both career pathways, which in many cases are now becoming A to G credit. But I think that students should have the choice at the end of high school to decide which pathway to pursue. So I really think that the dashboard is talking about what schools need to do. And as we've said, if you create a measure, people pay attention to it. So we have a suspension measure and people are looking at alternative suspension now. We're looking at chronic absenteeism, and not that we haven't been worried about it, but we're taking a look at those kids that are absent 10% or more days. And we're looking at it earlier. So I do think to limit the option for a child, that we need to support them with the best opportunities.
Board Member Candina.
Yeah, I agree with the past two board members. I think that college and career is super important. Like me being a senior and about to graduate, something that I'm seeing within my peers is that we're lucky that we have the option and the opportunity to have access to college and career. Because what's going on is that a lot of my friends who expected, oh, I'm just not going to go to college or like, are going to go to college. And so we're really thinking about, and me thinking about this, is just like, if a student makes a commitment that they're only going to career, but their senior year, and their senior year, and they want to graduate and go to college, you're just going to be like, wait, I'm not ready. And so it's very important that students have that option. And, you know, it's also about having access and whether or not these programs are like there for them and making sure that these programs are good for students, low-income students, students of color, first generation. Because, you know, looking at this, like the different measures, I know that I don't have access to all these things, my peers don't. And so really, having college and career pushes schools and districts to be like, hey, you can have access to IB, you can have access to APs. You know, that's something that's very important. And, you know, students who are very underserved. And so I feel that college and career is the key part because it kind of forces people to be like, hey, we have to give them access. Because the sad truth is that if you don't have to give access to a student because they don't want to, then you're not. And so I think the second one really opens the doors for many students.
Board Member Sun.
So I'm agreeing with the trend of this conversation to look at our CCI through the lens of schools, the second one. However, I really want to emphasize college and career. Because we could say college, we have a lot of college graduates who have no idea what they're going to do or what they're doing when they get out of college. It's going to ultimately all lead to a career. So it's just about the pathway and how you get there. And it's, we're in this also for the long game, right? It's not just about you getting a career, getting a college. It's continuing to rise and move up in whatever status you have and providing that opportunity. So I want to change that sentence to say, leave high school with the ability to choose to pursue college and career instead of "or".
Yes.
Okay, so I want to begin by saying that back in 2016, when this panel took the action to adopt the CCI, I was really clear that the title of that accountability metric was college and career. And I have never wavered in my understanding that the conjunction was "and", not "or", not "and slash or". There's a difference between, you know, as a former high school English teacher, there is a difference between what "and" means and what "or" means. This is an accountability metric that is intended to operate at the school and the district level. So to talk about vision one is actually antithetical to what we intend this metric to do as an accountability metric. This is intended to hold schools and districts accountable for their behavior in addressing a very specific statewide priority to provide a broad course, broad and rigorous course of study to all students. And this, the reason why that statewide priority is important is because if we're not going to be, to quote Nikki Giovanni, if we can't be honest about this, if now is not a good time to be honest, I don't know when. Schools have failed students of color when it comes to providing, first, a broad course of study, second, a rigorous course of study, and access to the kinds of high-quality educational experiences that students in other districts have. So that statewide priority was intended to bring some attention and some awareness to that issue. What we heard from the presenters from Madera today, as Board Member Burr said, this was an LEA that actually brought to life the intent of this particular accountability metric. So for that reason, I also support vision number two. But I need to remind you, the purpose of vision number two and the purpose of this metric is to hold schools and districts accountable for how they are addressing that statewide priority. It is still in the education code that students and their parents make the decision about whether students are going to decide to go to college or pursue through their high school that career path or that college path. What this is designed to do is, as you saw in Madera, make them more purposeful in paying attention to what they do with their programs so we don't have tracking or so that we don't have school counselors telling students, you are intended to be a secretary. Or so that when high schools say that we offer an A to G for all course, but there's only two sections of Spanish and one section of French, we know all the students are not getting that access to A to G because that's mathematically impossible to squeeze them all into those three sections. So it makes them more accountable and more aware and more purposeful, not only on what they do with their master schedule, but with all of those programs. And we heard very clearly from Madera how they made sure all of their programs were available to all of their high school students at both of their current high schools and what they are doing to track students' attention. Not to track students, but to help them track their attention and begin to have informed ways early on in their school career to make those decisions. Vision number two not only implements what the ed code intended for us to do, but still leaves the flexibility in place for students to make that choice. So I definitely support vision number two.
I just note as I'm moving to Board Member Patia Bronson that one of the things that Madera did was integrate A through G into their pathway courses, which is something that, in the way that many high schools are run, is not currently a strategy. So one of the challenges in the process is you can't just say, take all of A through G and take a whole CTE pathway independently from one another. There aren't enough hours in the day and courses on the roster for that. And we have to think about how to define this in a way that it becomes, where our goal is not to kill the students. Our goal is to graduate them. And how that kind of integration and ways of thinking about this. Because the other part of it is if somebody's on the A through G pathway, then what do they need to do to have a career kind of experience? So just to sort of complexify it a little bit as we think ahead. Board Member Patia Bronson.
So I'll join with the endorsement of the second statement, which I think is, has at this point seemed pretty widespread. What I think is actually a little bit of a disconnection, though, is that it seems like most of the data that we have either tells you whether you're college-ready or career-ready. And this maybe gets us to the data conversation. But thinking about the degree to which career education becomes, instead of a set of options, becomes a lock for students. And this gets to the tracking conversation and potential. But I do think it provokes the, an interest in knowing to what degree students move beyond those different pathways. If they actually go, if they simultaneously compete, complete a career pathway as well as a college pathway. So if you have Venn diagrams showing that there's significant overlap, especially among low-income families, especially among first-generation college-going families, to know that you are actually having them do both is a different set of data to track rather than just either data on college or career. The second thing I think is that there is a economic component to the dual pathways or dual enrollment conversation, I think, that was presented earlier. Which is if you graduate from high school with nine units, college is eminently more affordable because you do not have to pay for nine units. And thinking about what we can do to actually reach out to students and not just communicate a vision of, we want people to go into career, we want people to go into college, but it is financially feasible for you, however your life path might look leading up to it. The last thing, actually, I was just thinking about as, as we were talking about the binary of either college or career-ready is that in my, in my day job, I oftentimes work on early learning. And so the imagination and the preparation work for early learners is to imagine what is the workforce of the future? Which is to say that it is completely unimaginable to imagine what someone born today is going to need in terms of career prep, right? The jobs in, when I was in high school, there was no such thing as working on the cloud, right? That, these are jobs that are rapidly evolving in ways that are very difficult to anticipate. And what I do think then that actually behooves us to think about is for either the career pathway or for the college pathway or for the blended pathway, that there is an orientation that needs to be in whichever pathway it is, which is an orientation for learning to continue to learn rather than learning for a finite set of skills that either gets you through A through G completion or a career capstone project in a career that may or may not be here in 20 years.
So I have to commend the staff. The CCI indicator, as we all probably know, is probably the most, one of the most complicated indicators. It's like a rabbit hole. You can continue to crawl down the hole. I think one of the things that jumps out to me about this is that we have to be really clear about what we wanted the CCI indicator to help schools and districts improve. is that we have to be really clear about what we wanted the CCI indicator to help schools and districts improve. And if the idea is that the, the indicator was to help schools improve equity and access and options and opportunities for post-secondary outcomes and success for, for students, then the indicator should be driving the improvement of what schools are offering and the coursework they're offering. What, what drives me, what drives the issue around students is that locals should be driving the indicators for improvement for students and trying to connect, connect the value to the indicator for them. And the challenge with that is when we say all students, this indicator fails to capture all students. So we don't think about our medically fragile. We don't necessarily aren't able to capture students with disabilities. We can't capture students that, that are on a, um, a trauma, in a trauma situation and in and out of juvenile detention centers. And we're trying to prepare them also for college and career and failing to oftentimes give credit to, um, locals and educators in terms of how can we capture what the essence is of this indicator in terms of creating the option for the particular student who may not necessarily meet these indicators? And giving credit to those students who are medically fragile and students with disabilities. So I think that, and I'm so glad to hear that there's a working group that is going to be focused on creating better connections with this indicator in terms of meeting all students, but I think we have to be sensitive to that. That it's the locals' job to create a connection from this indicator to the student. How do we create better opportunities for our students without having this indicator drive everything that we do and forget about students that are on, often in the margins of our situation? The other issue is we have to recognize and be sensitive to the fact that there are barriers related to this indicator, that's, school districts have a difficulty controlling, such as geographical isolation to industry that gives them access to internships and apprenticeships. Access to dual-credit enrollment in terms of the teacher quality. So getting a, getting a, a teacher that has a master's degree to teach a dual-credit course is often challenging for geographically-isolated districts. And so I think as we work towards it, it, to me, it seems like it's a no-brainer. The tool was designed to help schools improve equity and access, improve options and opportunities for post-secondary outcomes as related to college and career. But as we dive into the details and how we measure, I think it's essential that we're, we're sensitive to the fact that the indicator, if that being the, the end goal, does not necessarily capture the essence of what all means, and it doesn't always reflect the challenges that locals are having in attaining this indicator.
Matt, do you have any particular thoughts about how one could better capture the all?
I, you know, I think, I think the challenge here is that we have to make sure that we give credit to some of the program opportunities that districts are creating in lieu of the barriers that they face in relationship to the students they serve. So if we have a stu-, when we say college and career, and we're looking at students that are receiving, say, um, uh, safe-serve certifications, they are students with disabilities that, uh, whose parents are dealing with cognitive delays and, and they're in and out of medic-, medically-fragile institutions because related to the disability. Can we give credit to those students in relationship to their IEP goals and objectives in some way? Can we validate that that is of value to us as a, as a state? That the goals and objectives that we've articulated as attainable career opportunities for you are of value here? The question is, the same question we have in relation to the pathways, how do we, how do we create a definition of what a high-quality outcome is in relationship to an IEP goal and objective? How do we create a high-quality definition related to a pathway? But I would, I would think that there's a way that we can roll into the approaching prepared conversation, that you may not, your end goal may be that you're, you're going career to college as an option, and your, and your actual end goal may be career. And giving an opportunity to roll those, that conversation into a value metric for a district to be able to say, we attained, this student has attained the goal outcome that the parents and us as a local institution agreed was the best attainable outcome for him or her. And therefore, can we give them some recognition on this metric? I think if we, if we, if we had a conversation about rolling that into, certainly it's tough under the CTE pathway, um, to roll those kinds of conversations in, but I think there's an opportunity to create another indicator there, or a metric there, that would give us, allow us to say all and mean all, so to speak.
Yeah. Sue?
Well, I really appreciate you, um, raising that issue, Matt, because I think it's one that we, we grapple with. And, um, I wonder if some of the good work that we saw modeled with our, um, alternative school accountability measures, we could do the same kind of thing with our Advisory Commission on Special Ed. For example, they're a great resource for that to address some of the issues that Matt raised, because I think they are really critical. I, I just want to go back to, and I appreciate what I sort of hear is the consensus that number two is the vision, that it's, it's always the one I've had in my head from the beginning. So I, I think, but I want to make sure that people understand that it does, it is providing the opportunity to the student, as, as Board Member Strauss, I think, said it most well, that this, it's, the accountability is at the school level to provide the most choices available to every student, so that the student has the opportunity to choose what they're going to do after college, or after high school. Um, and that, that's what they're intended to be. So if there's any confusion about that, because I think the second bullet that says schools provide the coursework that best prepares students for both college and career, people are kind of hung up on that. You know, we highlight that, we, but just to make sure that we are affirming that that's the case. It seems to me where we are now that with this consensus is, we need to get the word out. We need to deputize Madera Unified to go out and tell districts, you know, how, how to make that a powerful metric, what that means for students on the ground. And I only say that facetiously. What we really need to do are our support providers, our county offices of education, that are, you know, um, responsible now for providing differentiated assistance, for helping LEAs work through their LCAPs, et cetera. This is the kind of work that they need to be doing, in my view. It's also the kind of work that the collaborative needs to be doing, which I know we are, and I'm speaking as the chair of the collaborative, so giving ourselves work to do. But I think, and, and they've done some of that already in their professional development rollout, about how do you use data and how do you, uh, you, you account for students, you know, your unduplicated students to whom you're supposed to be providing additional assistance? Because we're now at a place in our accountability system that we're mature enough, that we, with the measurements that we've grappled with up here, that we now need to help folks with the implementation and, and making sure that they understand what this means for their students on the ground. Matt made that point as well, that, um, it, it's about the partnership at the local level with the parents and students. And I think we really need to be thinking about what are our next steps in, in helping our support providers get to that point.
Yeah, and I think part of that challenge is helping people think about how to integrate. I mean, A through G is a unique thing. California is the only place that defines college readiness in that way, with a particular set of courses, um, which has its own challenge. I was noting to somebody that, you know, we talk about STEM, but until recently, we had no TE, uh, from STEM in the A through G, except as electives. So the range of courses you can take to be college-ready in most cour-, in most states is different than it is here. It's more flexible. You can organize around more leading-edge, uh, concepts that may integrate better with, um, you know, career pathways as well. So the places that have been creative about getting A through G blended into pathways are doing something important and unique and challenging. Uh, at the same time, we also don't want kids to feel like, I've got, uh, these requirements to take all of these courses and all of these courses, and I can't do extracurricular activities. You know, I can't do journalism, or, uh, dance, or whatever it is. Um, I'm reminded of the study that ACT did some years ago, which was trying to predict later-life success. And they found that the best predictor of later-life success was not the ACT, the SAT or their, uh, other grades, but it was participation in extracurricular activities, which is sometimes the way that kids find their passion. It's the way they find their skill set that they carry with them into college or careers. So we need to do it in a way that is sufficiently flexible that you can get a well-rounded education with all those options and not have our definitions create an, you know, uh, uh, something that pushes kids away from other, you know, electives or opportunities that they would also, which would beat college and career, uh, you know, ready. Another one that's kind of like that may be computer science. That's going to be an initiative, you know, the governor is very interested in that. We've put on the table as well, we have an item on it tomorrow. Uh, that's actually college and career in a certain kind of way, right? To take those courses, and we want to incentivize, um, you know, districts to be offering that kind of opportunity. So I think these definitional questions will, which incentivize districts in certain directions will be very important for us as we pursue the, the unanimous consensus that we are going for college and career. But we need to do it in ways that are not too, um, prescriptive to make it, uh, to push other things out unintentionally. Other comments? Oh, great.
A couple of, of our public comment speakers mentioned a need for a definition. So I think that this vision is a good starting point, but we definitely need to work it out a little bit more. The Board Member Novel mentioned something that sparked, chalked my memory a little bit about the five-year graduation rate, which I know we're not discussing now, but it is relevant because this is based on a four-year graduation rate. And so we'll have to consider that as well when we're thinking about including all students. We haven't defined who the five-year graduate, we don't really know, or at least, I don't know who currently is part of the five-year graduation rate. I know that folks have said it's, it's an advantage or it's a benefit for students with disabilities, as well as English learners. I joined a webinar by MPI, the Migration Policy Institute. We, um, I, you know, asked, what about LTALs? What about students who have been in our system since, since elementary? Is a five-year graduation rate suitable for them? And they said, well, that's really, you know, they, their response was, that's squishy ground, because are we giving districts an out? By not necessarily educating our, our, um, English learners in a fo-, in a four-year span. And so they were talking more about newcomers and new arrivals, right? And so we need to define who those students are, but whoever they are, we also need to make sure they're, they're reflected in the CCI. Because right now, this is only based on students who graduate in a four-year cohort. So we'll have to really figure out if we included, how that would be included into this indicator.
Well, the other piece of that is that the five-year graduation rate is also relevant to early college situations, where kids can't actually, you know, sometimes it's designed so that within the five years, you graduate with the equivalent of an associate's degree. So it's not only for kids who may have, um, some challenges coming in that they need to overcome. It's also for kids who are trying to excel and get that, um, additional, um, boost to college that Kim was talking about earlier, you know, graduating. We, I, I worked in a school that, with a school that was an early college school, and, um, our first, you know, valedictorian went off to UCLA and graduated in two years there because she had already gotten all the early college credits to enable that to happen. So, you know, the, these places where we can be flexible can enable, you know, new models to emerge that are much more productive, much more efficient, much more successful. Yes? Patricia? I think you're next in line, but...
Yes.
Okay. Karen keeps the list of order.
Um, I think the other thing we have to do, because what I keep hearing are all of these different facets of what has to be considered. And I was especially, uh, thinking, or at least I flashed on it when I heard Board Member Novel speak about how we include the all in this conversation. Roman Sterns, when he gave his testimony, talked about the need to have a clear definition of what is college and career readiness. If we're going to try to consider particularly how we include students with disabilities who have IEPs or 504s, so that we capture information about them, we're going to have to be clear on how we're defining clear career readiness, how we're defining college readiness. And one of the things that I'm becoming increasingly aware of, particularly as hi-, as community college districts look at implementing their requirements for moving students who are on the transfer track through their programs and getting rid of all of the classes they put students in for proficiency, that's so that students are on the transfer track, they have a very different need for the definition of college readiness, so that when students arrive in their programs and matriculate out of our K-12 system, they don't show up and have a need for proficiency courses and for courses to help them catch up with whatever may be lacking or gap, or is in the gap. So when we look at this definition, we have to be mindful of who we're sending our students to into the pro-secondary options that we're talking about as it relates to college and career readiness, because they have a different, an additional level of accountability about how they transfer those students on or move their students through their, their programs as well. So I think understanding what we're defining and what the metrics are would be important. Because right now, it seems as if by approving the elements and the metrics that we're holding schools accountable for, we are in some way assuming that is the definition of readiness. So well, that's the definition of accountability, but that's separate and different from what it means as an outcome for readiness. So we may need to take a step back and look at, as Dr. Conley pointed out in his research, and also as Dr. Darling-Hammond pointed out in her research, you know, what do these metrics mean as an outcome for students and what their readiness ultimately is? We have never really, uh, defined what our definition of readiness is, but we have started creating a very broad spectrum of metrics for accountability. And I think that's two different conversations.
Other thoughts? I think we're kind of landing, uh, if not clearly, at least, uh, consistently on, um, the second, you know, the co-, college and career. Um, there is also the question on the table about how do we think about measuring career? And how do we validate those measures? You know, we've been validating against the smarter-balanced assessment. It was not particularly developed for, um, measuring career. Um, and so there's a low correlation. Uh, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's an invalid measure of career readiness. So I'd love to get that conversation on the table, uh, for people to chew on together. And then I'm going to invite Cindy to, um, you know, invite, uh, remind us of other issues that they need to get our feedback on. Yes, Sue?
I feel the least, um, expert in the career side. Of course, from my colleagues who have been doing a lot of work, but I, I know that they've talked about some particular assessments in the career area, work keys being one. I can't remember the other ones that were on there. But I wonder if any of those would be good, met sense for validating the college-ready against the S-BAC, whether it would make sense to do the same kind of thing with the career readiness assessments?
I don't know if we have done, got any research available on the validation of those. Um, so I'd turn to Cindy to...
We have not.
That was an easy answer.
Let's do that.
We also have never collected the data statewide. So we're, uh, at least a, a year off from even collecting if a student has taken the test.
Um, you know, some data from some other states that we may want to access and so on. I mean, I've heard mixed reviews about the validation studies on those, but we should do our homework and maybe bring something back to the board that would allow us to think about that. Um, Sue? I mean, sorry, Eileen?
Um, I just wanted to follow up on what Member, Member Novel was talking about, is that for the students that have unique situations, I think we need to address that in probably a work group. Um, and just on the list of many things that we still want to do, particularly students with disabilities who, um, who we, think about the ones we keep till 22. Keep it, think about the, and we do try to give them internships and other experiences in the, and so I think, again, I, I know we have a lot, and this is an evolving system, but we're trying to address all students, and we have lots of complexities with Member Novel shared. So I think, um, I think we need to continue to look at the issues of students who have IEPs, who have other, um, collaborative efforts to guide what we think are realistic based on their work potential and their academic and alternatives. That's one area. The other is the students in alternative programs and how we address those kind of situations. Students who, and we're, we've really, I think, paid more attention to foster youth and other students, um, under this, these guidelines than we have in the past, but there's complexities that if you haven't lived in the system, you don't realize how challenging life is for some kids and how hard we're trying to look at the right opportunities. look at the right opportunities. And if we do that well, how does that fit into the system? So, I just want to put those as future kind of work issues. Again, you have some priorities laying out, and there's almost, there's a staff capacity and how much you can do. I think our work groups have been particularly helpful. I think the DAS study group has been helpful. And so, I think as we look at some of these, maybe that and also a special ed work for group might be helpful in identifying. I think it's complex. But I just didn't want to lose those issues.
Yeah, I was going to ask Cindy to actually review with us, because you did talk about that a little bit in your presentation, where we are with your on-career measures collected in 2018, 19.
Good. This is the slide, and we've actually, as I mentioned earlier, the Advisory Commission on Special Education has, continues to give us a great deal of, of really rich information. Kristin Wright from our Special Education Division has, keeps inviting us to, to all the groups that she speaks with as well. So, we've created sort of an ad hoc group. Jenny wanted me to mention that. The medically fragile student group keeps coming up. I know that AXA has brought it up specifically. We don't collect information about medically fragile students. In fact, there's not really a statewide definition around medically fragile students. With that said, it keeps coming up in terms of the chronic absenteeism indicator. So, so we will, we, well, Jenny has committed to bringing together a group around that. But, but as far as what you see on the screen with casemiss at the bottom there and completion of workability, those three bullets, those were directly influenced not only by the Alternative Schools Task Force, but the Special Education Advisory Commission. And then, we've actually, we were offered to present to a joint group of the workability program. And they were so excited to be at the table and to be included in the accountability system. And they were even more excited about the fifth-year graduation rate consideration, because they, they said that that would really make a meaningful difference with students who are in their program. So, I'm very hopeful and optimistic that this data collection, the year that we're in right now, will lead us in a really good discussion in the year ahead as to working, especially with our students with disabilities and our students in alternative schools. So, we've definitely leveraged those, those work groups. I'm sure there will still be work to do. We need to make sure that what we see in data is of high quality and that it makes sense. And so, before we bring it back to you, we'll go through those normal processes that we do with policy groups and subject matter experts and our technical design group.
Yes, Matt?
I wonder if there's, if you foresee an opportunity with, with bringing together CalPads and casemiss, an opportunity to maybe capture some of that data around college and career, and career as it pertains to students on IEPs who are post-secondary with 18 to 22, and maybe medically fragile IEPs, that they also have an opportunity for career attainment. And I wonder if you see an opportunity to grab metrics we haven't been able to before.
I think there's going to be a lot of opportunities with casemiss. It's, it'll happen this coming academic year. So, we will, we'll have a lot of work ahead of us, as opposed to distilling the data and trying to take it out of what is helpful. But the, the staff that run casemiss is our Special Education Division. And like I said, we're in constant communication with them on these issues and others related to accountability, because it's been such a focus, of course, of the student group, and that student group being the largest number of districts identified for differentiated assistance.
Are there other thoughts about, one of the questions I wanted to ask about the career measures is, where are we exactly in the use of industry certificates, et cetera?
We have some work ahead of us. We have not started collecting that data. We do need to, to bring together a group to start figuring out where they fit. So, we have a vacancy in that division. We have, we have a lot of opportunities moving ahead, picking up with, I'm sure with a new director and with, you know, with Deputy Superintendent Cortez Alcala's background in that area. So, so it'll be, there's more work to do.
Give us our next indicators.
No.
Thank you very much.
Lot, lot of rich expertise in the building. It's just a matter of, you know, prioritizing the work.
And I guess, are there any other questions? I have another one, but I don't want to keep going unless, Ting, did you want to?
I'm trying to, I'm looking at the question of, do we want to use a predictive model for individual students as post-high school? I, I'm really struggling with that, because I get the correlation piece, but correlation's not causation. And so, I feel like we're making some leaps. And I don't know if that's okay or not, or if we really need to look at other research that has a direct, that shows direct impact, rather than, here's a few little pieces out here that shows the correlation. And I think that's where, went back to my original, my first question around, what kind of data are we collecting? Do we have a little bit more information about other, how many of these little indicators these students are actually hitting? Is it just one or two, or those kind of percentages? So, I don't know. I really struggle with that.
Well, you know, that is kind of related to the question I was going to ask. So, we'll throw them both in your direction, Cindy, which is on work-based, work-based learning experiences. Because there is a literature on that that shows that well-designed work-based learning experiences do have a relationship to kids' abilities to develop a variety of skills and succeed, and they can have helpful effects both on college and career readiness. But I think we have ahead of us the question of how to define those. Is that right? And I'd love to hear a little bit more about that.
How to define the...
Work-based learning experiences or internships?
Um, do you have, do you have any questions?
I don't have it. Big difference between, you know, going for a week to hang out in a local, you know, candy store or something versus really having a, you know, designed internship experience. Right. So, so we... Yeah, exactly. Thank you. So, I didn't bring the definition down that we have designed for CalPads, but we did work with our CCI work group members on how we were going to define internships. And of course, we have to collect the number of hours. We don't know what the appropriate number of hours of an internship should be until we look at some statewide data. We have indicated that it needs to be connected to the curriculum. So, it needs to be, whatever internship they have needs to be connected to whatever courses that they're taking, and that they need to have, and that there has to be some evaluation of those students in their internship by the people who are supporting them. So, those were some of the things that we thought about. We have a definition written up that we can give to you and send to all the board members. But we are collecting pre-apprenticeship certificates, and our definition for that is an indication of whether or not students successfully complete a program where they earn industry certifications that are recognized and certified by business and/or industry at the local, state, or national level.
Great.
So, so we are defining, we are putting some parameters around this. That's great. So, on the internships, the work-based learning experiences, you know, one of the ways that a student who's on the A through G, you know, taking all the A through G courses and aiming to college, might get, the career readiness might be through an internship. I'm, I'm not sure whether it will always be a one-to-one correspondence between a course that they're taking and that experience. So, that might be something we want to reflect on, is, you know, what range of possibilities do we want to allow for that if there's not, you know, a specific course? And given that A through G, this is one of my complaints about A through G, is often very removed from applications. The likelihood of having that link might be even a little, little less. So, we will want to look at those definitions and think about how they might play out. We'll make sure that we send them to Karen Stappwalter, so she can distribute them. Great. Patricia, did you have another comment? And is there anybody on this side? I want to, I'm backing forth.
Yeah, I did have a, in response to the question, the first question on this slide, I also agree with Board Member Sun. I'm not really sure that doing these predictive models is helpful for the work that we're doing on the, developing this accountability metric. It was entertaining and highly informative for me to see this, these correlations. But again, I don't think it's helpful in the context of what we intend to use this accountability model to do. And again, I keep harping on, and I'm very mindful of the fact that there still is kind of a gap between what we are defining as college readiness and how community colleges are tracking the students who matriculate into their systems. And those predictive models don't cover that kind of gap, and what it is that they are looking for and what it is they need. In the same way that we heard from Madera, that they are purposefully speaking with their business partners and their stakeholders about how to define what the outcomes for students should be in the courses that they are preparing the students through in their career pathways, we need to think about the community colleges and the universities as our stakeholders in what, in the students who are matriculating into their systems, because there is still a gap there. There is still a concern about what they are seeing and defining and needing readiness to be, and what our metrics so far, the directions our metrics are taking. So, their conversation has gone and has matured a little bit more than ours has, because there's some more accountability for them, not in the forms of being accountable for outcomes. But as Dr. Darling Hammond has already pointed out, there's a difference in how much time students have to spend in college, if they have to take preparation courses or proficiency courses that delay or extend not only the amount of money they're paying, but the amount of time they have to spend. That's a different level of accountability for university and community college programs that we're not really aware of, and I think we have to pay attention to. So, I don't think question number one gets us on the pathway to that particular conversation. It's, it's very interesting information, but it's not helpful for us to define exactly whether or not our model is giving us as a net outcome, information that's useful for other stakeholders like that.
I think there is some data about how in the CSU system, using S-BAC, for example, as one of the measures, is playing out to get kids out of the remedial cycle. I don't know if we want to ask for more information on that. It looks like Macal might have something to say about that.
She does have some background there.
I thought so.
Some of it is presented in a Getting Down to Facts report, where we've actually matched K-12 students, their Smarter Balance scores, to both their first-year outcomes, whether they're placed out of remediation at both community colleges and at CSU. And some of it is in this new work looking at first-year grades for CSU and UC. Importantly, though, these are, I think we're trying to add, as I was referencing it, we're trying to add the CCI in addition to those individual indicators. And also importantly, we're doing this in a time period where both community colleges and CSUs have made sweeping reforms to remediation placement. So, it's work we want to continue to do, because we in fact want to see if they're using Smarter Balance, or, or even grades, high school grades in particular, courses, how they're using it in both placement, and how students are doing, if they're in fact going straight into co-requisite courses at CSU, how are they faring once they get there? So, it is work ongoing. We're doing it by linking.
Do you have any takeaways for us from that?
Yeah, I mean, I think what we know is that the thresholds matter. We tested that. You see that in the Getting Down to Facts work.
About what that means?
Yeah, the threat, the prepared levels on Smarter Balance, the level threes and fours. We combine them for, for prepared levels, and we see them both in terms, I direct you to that report, because we do more than just look at first-year grades. We actually look at sort of placement outside of, you know, into proficient level, at CSU-determined proficient level, that is, being placed out of a remedial course. But, but again, they want us to continue to do the work, if they're going to use multiple measures, to see what, you know, how much Smarter Balance versus grades. There's a lot of conversations around using course grades. And so, again, now that we have all the CalPads data, we're actually able to do a much more complex model to see what matters. We're looking at fourth-year math, particular course pathways, dual enrollment, advanced placement, all in addition to Smarter Balance. Again, the key, the key thing I'll say with CCI, though, is we want to know above and beyond individual performance, does the school accountability metric around CCI, being in a school that has a prepared, you know, has a preparation level, does that add as a metric for school quality in terms of preparation, above and beyond the individual measures? And so, we're trying to do both pieces.
So, we will have some answers to your question, it sounds like. And who is next? Oh, great, Felisa.
Yeah, I, I just, thank you for that, because I'm sitting here thinking, yeah, I do want to know if there's a predictive model for this. We're, we're trying to get an indicator that will tell us, are we preparing students for college and career? And so, I know that I run small programs, and we go back and look at ninth grade as an indicator for students who will graduate high school. And then, we look at what are some of the indicators that we will need to make sure that our students, in particular Latino students who drop out by 50%, of them will drop out after their first year of college, what do we need to make sure that they stay, persist, and graduate? For me, that's the information that we need. That's, that's what we're saying. We're building this indicator so that we know that we're setting our students up for success. We need to define what that means, right? But I, I thought that that's why we were doing this, for predictive power. Did I miss something along the way?
There's also prediction of career, which is an even naughtier question. We've got a lot of great data. We'll invite you back, Macal, to tell us all about that. But the career piece, we're going to need to do some literature searching, I think, on that. Eileen?
I had one comment. I was very fortunate. On April 22nd, I was at the core advisory meeting, and they're doing some amazing work on a freshman-on-track program that I'll do a little more summary in my report on Thursday. But I think they're looking at a variety of indicators in high school, that they are working at a very large population, not just the core districts, but those who've chosen to join that collaborative work. And I think as we look at work groups, again, they're a good incubator, and they're really trying some innovative ways to look at many more indicators. It might be, I'm assuming that they will be part of the program, but I'm just saying, there are some really good models out there of looking at beyond the kinds of things that we have in our state data system. And I just wanted to support that work and encourage that we look at some of their practices as we continue to play this out.
Yeah, and I just want to say, I really appreciate that this study session has helped us broaden the types of measures that we might want to see in this indicator. Because I think while the predictive model got us started, it, I think, started limiting us in our, our thinking of what the CCI is about. We were just looking at what could we collect and what could, what were the correlation numbers and all that. And I think we got really limited to what happens big-picture-wise. So, I appreciate we've had this conversation. Now is now the hard work of what's the next steps, and how do we go about maybe tweaking or reforming this, this indicator, so it goes, gets to what we actually intended it to be.
So, unless there are any other burning issues, we've had a really good conversation. That was a nice closing statement from Ting. So, I think, you know, take a good closing statement when you hear one. We're a little bit over our anticipated time, and we will, we're not adjourning, so to speak, but we are going to re, we are adjourning, okay.
This time we are.
This time, we are adjourning. Tomorrow, we don't get to adjourn at the end of the day. So, I knew there was one of those coming.
Don't we have to have general public comment? Do we have anybody?
Do we have anybody who wants to make general public comment, knowing that we're already over our time?
I have any hard time.
No, we, we dearly want to know.
I have to see if there is.
Okay. There is no sign up. Having no sign up, we will adjourn the meeting, and we will reconvene tomorrow morning at 8:30. Thank you. Good conversation.